Should we all stop?
Okay, so, so.
I can pause it. I can pause it.
Feel free to.
Somebody has a.
Technical difficulties, as I understand.
Disable the chat, right? We ask all of, we ask everyone who is participating maybe to please block their video until they are participating.
Um, yeah, and the last, I would just say, if for some reason technology doesn't allow us to continue, or we get interrupted, or for some reason we're not able to continue, we will end the meeting and we'll send out a new link for people to rejoin, so we can carry on with the process as usual. So, um, thank you, thank you, everybody for joining, and as I said, thank you in advance for patience as we work through this new hybrid format.
And particular greetings to council member Humar and council member Robak in cyberspace. And can everyone else please block your videos? Okay, thank you. So our first agenda item is public comment period. So if anyone on Zoom wants to make a comment, they can let me know, anyone in the audience. Nothing at this moment, nothing at this time. Okay, excellent. The next item is approval of the agenda as presented, is there a motion? Approved the agenda? Okay, thank you, is there discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor? Yeah, I see the, I see the council members. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda, is there a motion? And I saw council member, oh, one second, is there discussion?
I have a couple of suggestions or comments, I mean, it is only introduction, I mean, thanks for asking.
Okay, um, and I did actually make a couple of small changes to the rental rules. So, um, I'll do track changes, so when it's, uh, we look at it.
You, you can always amend the rules, because they're not the. Okay, so further discussion, hearing now, all those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, I see compassionations. Yes, okay, next, we will start with our first public hearing. Okay, we'll begin, today is September 6, 2022. This is the hearing before the town Somerset Council variance application, V222, to consider two variance requests submitted by Amy and Jeff from the setback requirements of Somerset Town Road and property located 55211 Street. The applicants are also represented by Michael Rouse of MPR Architecture, who has submitted the application on the offense behalf. This hearing is being recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council we call upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making a public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, Somerset Town staff represent their findings and submit for the record a report on the application and the consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, the Somerset Town Council have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, present comments to the council. Following that, the applicant will have the opportunity to provide a testimony if necessary, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion or permit decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted out by the council enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now will begin the hearing with a presentation of Somerset staff findings from the town's district town manager.
Uh, yeah, I'm mostly gonna turn it over to our building engineering consultants. The only thing I'll just note is that you might recall that the applicants got their application for their building permit last month, and were sort of on the fence about whether or not they wanted to do this small addition, which is an overhang on their front stoop, and a trellis lattice kind of structure on the side of it. And so, um, this is just a follow-up on that to add these elements to it, and does require a variance, but otherwise I'll, I'll turn.
Have applied for two variances for the existing house. It can be issued their approval for these improvements with the original voters on the date of May 19th, 2022. Building from applications indicates the established building length 28.95 feet from the front property line. The existing front porch is located approximately centered on the property, and the downside or setbacks are not an issue. First variance is to add a roof over the existing front porch. Downhill convinced the covenants will be projected into established building length, maximum of 2.5 feet. Same landing case, proposed roof relocated 22.5 feet from the front property line. A variance of four feet required.
Sorry for a second, apparently council member, I'm not sure that the council members online can hear.
Are you, are you able to hear, or a little, little spotty?
It's a little spotty.
I feel like maybe you could enunciate a little more.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, thanks, I'll.
I, I think in the future, we're going to, we'll, I think in the future, we're gonna get some microphones and a loudspeaker.
It wasn't something that we previously discussed.
No, 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 like.
Oh, you are, we can tap into that.
And wouldn't that, wouldn't that solve the problem?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so council members, please bear with us this moment. And if you, now you'll be able to ask better questions. Okay, proceed, so.
What I'm reading is in your pack, so.
Okay, so what, did you hear that? Okay. What he's reading is in your packet.
Yes, we got that, and I just wanna say I'm sorry that I'm not in person, and appreciate everyone.
This is good, this is, this is a good experience, so we can work out the technicalities, so.
You can hear me, right? And I could hear Shannon for sure, but you can hear us, okay?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you.
Second variances will propose lattice on the left side of the existing porch. Site plan indicates proposed lattice will be located 22.5 feet from the front property line. A variance of 6.5 feet is required for the lattice. If the two variances are approved, the applicant will need to apply for a permit revision for the proposed improvements on the town. Okay, this is my report.
Okay, thank you.
No, Dr. Feathers and I here, he doesn't have a report, we've already done, dealt with the tree protection and all that with the actual buildings, so this is not, not related to that tonight.
Okay, so that concludes the staff findings or reports.
I, I guess the, the one thing I'll note is, I included for you the, the site plans, and I think the best visual for you is on the last page of those site plans, where it has the, the side view that shows the little lattice structure, it almost looks like a fence kind of, and then showing the little overhang on the stoop there, so you know exactly what we're, we're talking about.
Okay, so now is the applicant's opportunity to make an opening statement and/or a short presentation and/or comments on the report. And could everyone involved please identify themselves for the record? Your, your, right. Michael Rouse, Principal Architect of MPR Architecture, representing the town. Okay, hold on one second, council members, can you hear?
Yes.
I'll continue to. Okay, good, thank you. Uh, my home address is 1232 Hamilton Street, Northwest Washington DC. Also my office address, 20011.
Okay, and I think the applicants are, yes, welcome.
Hi, this is Amy and Jeff Buto, hello.
Um, I'm happy to stand on the town court, but get more information, if that's helpful. We do have a burden proof statement that I think everyone's seen. In, in, uh, section 112-14, you want to be listed requirements for the variance, and how the variance needs to meet that, or if it's approved by the council. Um, I'm just gonna go through, there are four factors, I'll move them pretty quickly, so it's time. One, one requirement is that proposed construction do not significantly interfere with light air between residents and residential structures. Because this variance is located on the front of the building, we're basically not in the side yards, so we're not affecting any neighboring lights or air to the neighbors. Uh, the next requirement is that would not be compatible with the scale, mass, and character of the town and nearby residential structures. We're basically following the existing eve line we have in the house, which is still the domestic scale and nature. Um, we feel that, you know, the, the actual size that we're dealing with here, which is, something like three by six, three by nine, is on a small scale, so what we're asking for is not a large addition on the front or large porch, but actually just a small overhang. Uh, the granting of variance would not unreasonably adversely affect the use and sort of value of nearby properties. As the architect, I think we're actually improving the value of the property, uh, because it's improving the, uh, look at the street, it's giving, um, the residents an additional function of being able to go over their house, get their keys out without getting drenched, or it's raining. And there's, um, just the language of the porch is very important in the neighborhood. Some of the neighbors have porches that have been added over the. Speaking of neighbors, we reached out to six neighbors, uh, directly next to us and across the way. Uh, we sent to the town, and we know all the drawings that were submitted to that. And out of that, we received at least four emails back with approval from those neighbors that we had now towarded onto the town manager as well. Um, and lastly, just the caveat of other factors involved in this, we really feel that this is such a small, amount of footprint for the, for the eve and the lattice on one side, that the nature of it being such a small scale have little impact really on the, the neighborhood and. I'm happy to answer any questions for councilor, excuse me, what is next on the agenda?
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, one quick finisher, um, I did notice a small error in the agenda about the variance. Under paragraph accordingly, the following variances are requested, number one, I think we're asking for 22.6, but in the math calculation it says 22.5, it's a minor thing, I just don't want that to get myself away from it. Because the lattice and the, and the overhang were at the same depth. Very romantic.
Yep.
Could be important.
Thank you. Council presidents, or have you had any questions?
No questions, but I guess at this time I should mention, um, I was walking my dog down Up Ham, I live on Up Ham, and I didn't happen to, like, I happened to talk to one of the neighbors, mentioned that, uh, they'd been apprised that this was being, the variance was being busted, and they indicated, I didn't ask them to, but they indicated that we should. I, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, council member Mark.
Yeah. Just a question, um, where it is porch relative to the garage area that you said to be owned?
So, the porch itself, we're basically following, sort of, where the existing footprint of stoop. And the existing footprint stoop does come forward from the garage slant, and that dimension is. So, 22 and a half. 26. 2500. So. The garage itself is at 25.8 feet, and so we're coming, we're asking to come up to 22.5, so that appears to be 3.3 feet in front of the garage.
Is that? Okay, thank you, councilor, help.
No more questions, just wanted, just wanna thank you for not knocking down your houses, starting again with renovated, continuing it, you may, won't do that in neighborhood days, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member Humar. Do you have any questions?
No questions from my end, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilor Robak.
Um, maybe this was, maybe I just couldn't hear, but I, I guess I don't understand why the lattice is, uh, three feet longer than the front porch stoop.
I think I can maybe address the, the lattice, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rouse, or, or Amy or Jeff, but the, the lattice is the length of, of the existing stoop, and so essentially in lieu of a wall to purposefully to entirely enclose it, they're just putting, they're, they're, they're requesting to put a overhang that covers the existing stoop and a lattice on the one side of it.
And, yeah, I think it also goes to the town's, um, the idea that you're allowed to have an awning or an overhang project into the existing building line by two and a half feet, if I remember correctly. So that's probably why, that's why there's a difference between 6.35 and 3.85.
Okay, and so, do these, is that, is this all one variance, or does it require two separate variances?
It's two separate variances for essentially one project, as Mr. Rouse was saying, the one thing our code does allow is for overhangs to encroach a little bit into the setback, because eaves typically will go a little bit further than the wall line, for example. So, the, the lattice structure and the overhang are going to the same place, but because our code allows an overhang to encroach more than a wall, that's why there's two different numbers.
Do, do we also want to have a town turn about rain on it?
Sure, happy to do that, Mr. Mayor, I'll just turn on my camera.
Well, that's okay, but so, so it does, um, but the lattice is not like a wall, like, it's not getting built across the whole front of the house, it's just that one little out area where you like, kind of walk, so your like, packages don't get rained on and stuff like that, right?
That's true, yes.
Okay. Um, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from the president's request?
No other comments or questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Can, I will now turn it over to council president Sorka to lead the discussion.
Good, everyone, see some folks in person, virtually, um. Very interesting, I think, very exciting application for the council to consider, because it's the first application we've considered since we adopted the new rules regards to, um, extensions going into setbacks for the town as consciously adopted a more restrictive code, building code than the council. And my understanding of the processes we went through in, in getting to this point is that we wanted to hear requests to go into the setback as variance requests, we can consider on a case-by-case basis whether, if it, if it affects the town, et cetera. So, with, with that perspective from, from my vantage point, and as I look at this, this is a modest variance request for a stoop, which used to be excluded from these types of holes in the setback, or, or this would not require variance in the past. And I think this is, that the character of the town and the street in this, uh, Debbie, it, it. It supports a, a house as it has been built. So. I'm a favorer, but curious to hear if folks have questions, concerns, or reservations, and start from the right, is that it?
Um, I have to say that, I do say that your house is the very first house I've ever was in in Somerset, 39 years ago or something, because I know the original owners. And, um, so it's exciting to see you keep it as, as kind of like it is. But my only question about granting this variance, because I choose to see it as minimal, is this leave us open, you know, later on, you know, to turn down other variances of this, that's all. As long as we're not, you know, um, making a bad decision here in case of what else will come our way. Yeah, I understand the need to cover the front porch, you know, I, you know, I think that's, that's important actually for most homes, so, that's all my other question is, is to leave us open to later on if you turn something else down.
Right, there's a sub precedent.
Sub precedent, yes, I know.
And interfere with, uh, exercise of discretion.
I guess actually, um, Ron, can you address that question of precedent?
I certainly can. So, under Maryland law, your variance decisions aren't binding precedent. You decide each case on a case-by-case basis. With that said, you do have a responsibility to avoid arbitrary capricious decisions. So in that respect, there is some sort of a presidential battle in your decisions. However, every decision is distinguishable by the facts and circumstances of that case. In this case, based on the applicant's argument, you are reviewing whether this particular structure and this particular dimension for of porch roof, stoop roof, and lattice significantly interferes with light and air, compatible with the scale, scale, and masking character of the neighborhood, et cetera. And so each case is gonna be different, because you're gonna be applying the dimensions of the proposal to those criteria, and obviously could result in, in different findings.
Very much so. Let's go around the virtual room, I, Kabir, I see you next around the room. If you have any questions or comments, thoughts to share.
Yes, can you hear me? You can hear me, okay. Uh, I wanted to say that, um, I appreciate Debbie's question and, and Ron's response, that was helpful. Uh, but I'm sort of along the same page as you, Steve, in how you characterize this. I would add additionally that, you know, it, it. That. Men, use and value of nearby properties, because I understand we've heard from four neighbors, I think Steve, you mentioned you ran into one, and in our packet, I believe we have letters from two who are on either side of the property, so at least one of those being directly potentially impacted by the lattice structure, um, and, and have come out favorably. So, I'm inclined to, to sort of act favorably in this variance application. I also. For us, in terms of taking these case-by-case, because I think it will collectively educate us on, you know, where it makes sense and where it doesn't as time goes on, and I appreciate the opportunity to apply our code in this regard. Could you hear me, by the way?
Thank you, Sharon.
Um. Yeah, I think that I agree with what, um, Kabir said, because, um, I mean, it's not like they're taking the front porch, like, to halfway out their lawn, or, you know. And to make. Right?
You, you cut off on this for a moment, can you restate that?
Um, what I said was, it's, they're just, like, it's, it's not an outrageous, like, this was part of our town code before, right? Where you could build on, you know, to a house that didn't have, like, that front stoop kind of coverage, and I think that you can still build like a front porch on even, as long as it's like open air, and, you know, it's quite. Sure. Air into the setbacks. Is that right?
Double check, because I believe that the, an open deck or porch could, could be quite expensive. Nine feet into the prior, right, into the setback.
But didn't our old co, town code used to allow for that, or was that always a variance?
The, the prior code did allow, as an exception, projections, including front porches, nine feet into a front setback. So that did not require a variance, it was just allowed.
Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you, Sharon, and Ron, continue to wrap up.
Right, yeah, first of all, to, to the owners, um, this is our first one since the code was changed, is why we're all tentative and careful, um, so we are, of course, careful, all of it, tentative, not so much. Anyway, my, my comments, this is going to project a little bit into the front yard beyond where the rest of the house is. And, and the neighbors are complaining about it, it's a big thing, and everything that was said previously, it will not interfere with light and air between residences. It is absolutely compatible with scale, mass, and character of the town, it's, um, I can't see it affecting the value of other residences on their color, in fact, so, um, I don't.
Thank you, Rob. So it sounds like you're ready to make a question.
So. I know that we approved the various applications submitted by Amy and Jeff Buto to property located 55211.
Second.
In particular, commonirters says, um, are approved, front stoop lattice enclosure, and the stoop roof.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that a legally technical sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I think I heard council member Humar. Second, is there discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor? Okay, pass, you down, Miss Lee, thank you very much.
Yay, thank you.
Okay, we'll add though to the next hearing. Okay, we'll add though to the next hearing. Today is September 6, 2022. This is a hearing before the town of Somerset Council for variance application V221 to consider four variance requests submitted by Rock Beach Capital LLC from the setback requirements of Somerset Town Code for the property located at 4806 Grand Street. The applicants are represented by James Albee, who designated the power and authority to act on behalf of the company, and Luke Olson of GTM Architects, who submitted the application on the applicant's behalf. This hearing is being recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council we call upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town Staff will present their findings and submit to the record a report in the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application. Following that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application idea. Following that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony if necessary. After which, the public comment hearing of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permanent decision. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset Staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, before the manager provides the report behind me, there are a couple of comments. Of course, this is Ron, the town attorney. For purposes of the recording, it would be a good idea if everyone would say their name before they speak and also want to know that the neighbors Barry and Nora Levine have asked that an email chain be entered into the record. The manager has placed that in the Google Drive in the record along with other correspondence, or no, other correspondence among town staff members and the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
And I, um, just to add on, I, I have gotten a couple of comments that there's a little bit of difficulty hearing us on.
I was gonna say that Luke from GTM, what said is gonna be called in, is he, is he supposed to be on right now?
He, he, I believe he's, he's in there, yes. Um, so I, I was just gonna say to, to us here, um, as best, as best we can to project and enunciate, um, just so that everybody zooming in can hear us as, as best as possible. So thank you again for everybody for, for bearing with us. Um, I am going to just turn this over to our building engineering consultant, Mr. Lamire.
Application that was submitted for four variances for the existing house at 4806 Grand Avenue. The application indicates an established building line on Grand, along Grand Avenue. It's thirty three point three feet from the front property line. The application included a certified boundary survey. The variance application proposes to remove the existing carport which has flattened and replace it with a garage with a gateable roof about thirteen point five feet tall. They also propose to construct a new covered front porch. The survey shows the front wall of the existing house is setbackted from property line twenty five point five feet. The site plan indicates existing house is located eight feet from the right side property line. The proposed garage will be located ten point three feet from the left side property line. Town code says a minimum of eight feet on one side and a total of eighteen feet on both sides for side yard setbacks. These setbacks exceed the town's minimum side yard setback. The first variance is for the front setback for the proposed garage. The site plan indicates the front of the garage will be setbackted twenty five point six feet from the front property line. Variance of seven point seven feet is required. The second variance is for the setback to the proposed front porch. Site plan indicates the front porch will be setbackted twenty seven point three feet from the front property line, variance of six feet is required. The third variance is for the front setback for the e of the garage, which is setbackted twenty three point six feet from the front property line. Those allow, allows an e to approach into the front setback two point five feet. And a variance of seven point two feet is requested. The last variance is for the front setback for the e of the front porch, which will be located twenty six point three feet from the front property line. Variance of four point five feet is requested. Next conclusion on the report.
Um, I, uh, the only thing I'll add to Doug's report is just that I did create a, a visual aid for the council that color codes the four variances. I believe it's, um, the page after the, uh, after the actual, uh, site plans. Um, so that may help, that's a visual aid. But otherwise, um, I think that's, that's it from, from the town staff report, whatever.
Okay, thank you. Now, the applicant has the opportunity to present their application and your comment on the staff report.
Uh, this is Jim Albee. Is Luke on here? I don't see him on here.
Yes, yes.
Hi, Jim.
Oh, I have him, I can, can Luke.
Is, is he, um, can we see him here?
No, he's the architect.
I, I answered.
Jim is the, the owner.
Okay, so, can we get?
His video.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Sir, can you please turn your, your video?
I, I don't have a video camera, I can screen share, but, um, it would be audio only.
Okay, proceed, thank you, please proceed.
Okay, well, it's, first off, sorry that I'm unable to attend. I was feeling a bit under the weather today and didn't want to risk anyone's health over there. So I appreciate you accommodating me here. Uh, our application is pretty straightforward. We're, we're asking for two pieces. One is, there is an existing carport on this property and that carport is a covered structure with, with a pretty large invert that to one story structure. We're actually reducing the size of the roof in comparison to the existing structure. And to that effect, we're bringing it more in conformance than the existing structure is. And, and we feel like it does not impede the use enjoyment, light, character of the town. Um, and that it's, um, bringing this more into character with the architectural styles of the house and the town as a whole. Um, the second piece is a front porch. Given the location of the existing house and the existing established building line, there, there is no possibility of putting a front porch on this house without a variance. Uh, and to that end, we think a front porch is a nice feature to have on a house. Um, it's certainly common in the town. We're proposing a one-story structure that projects one foot less towards the, uh, the street than the existing house does. So to that effect, it, it's not impeding, uh, the mass of the house the, uh, the lighting, the character. It's fitting in between these two existing structures essentially, one which we're trying to enclose and the other which is to remain. And so we feel that this is a, a pretty minimal request that, that meets the requirements of a variance request. And prior to the latest town adoption will be allowed as a matter, of course.
Sir, does that include your presentation?
I, I'm sorry, yes, it does. There's a bit of a delay here, so, um, we'll have to deal with that.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Council President Sorkas, do you have any questions? I understand the demolition plan, which is on sheet number D100. But what I understand was to discuss with the plan. It sounds like everything is demolished down to the level of the ground, the grounds surrounding, is, is that correct? Like, all of the structure that rises together is being moved?
It's a, it's a matter for construction means and methods. Uh, we're looking to add some height to the first floor ceilings of the existing house. And if we are able to do that while retaining the walls, we'd love to, but, um, typically that would create a hinge condition which is within the wall that can be an issue. And so it would be easier to just take it down to the first floor deck and then build up from there. And that, that avoids that structural flaw or weakness within the wall. The other option is, um, a much more expensive method of construction, but the intent is that we're adding a second story over the first floor. But keep in mind that that's not a part of our variance request. That's all meeting the town code. And it's going to be a future building permit application. We would like to get, uh, an answer on the garage and the porch in advance so that we know what we can show in terms of building permit drawings before we file for the county permit and the town permit. Uh, building permit documents are a time intensive and costly process. And to go down the road with something that is not going to be approved is an undue burden. And so that's why we're before you today, asking about the carport and the front porch only.
Thank you for that response. I believe I understand what you're saying. And the council has, has indeed had these type of discussions with other applicants prior to county approval of, of documents. But I guess what I don't understand is going to that extent of demolition, why can't you just go from scratch within the required baselines?
We like the mass and the character of the existing house, especially that right wing that we are retaining. And we're looking for a sensitive addition to the neighborhood, not a tear down, new build. We're, we're trying to be good neighbors, good patrons, and provide a quality product that fits within the, uh, the town. And part of the way we're doing that is saving as much of the house as we can and, and emulating that style within the rest of the design. That's part of the reason we'd like to put a sloped roof on the, the covered garage, uh, so that it matches the roof lines elsewhere on the house. Another reason is that, uh, it'd be better for handling water and redirecting it to gutters and downspouts to get it away from the house and, and to where it needs to go. Uh, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to add, I, I think this may also help clarify some things, is that I'm not a developer. I don't, I don't know why that, it was a letter that had been saying that I was from the neighbors saying I was a developer. I'm actually a lawyer. And I, the, the reason that I ended up buying this house, that might be helpful to understand this, is that we did a renovation on our house in Arlington and, uh, GTM did it and they did a fable shot. And our, our main instruction to them was to have the house fit the character of the neighborhood. And they, and they did an incredible job of that. I think they even got a reward for it. And so when another house in our neighborhood was proposed for a builder to buy it and tear it down, we ended up buying the house, doing a, a very modest renovation on it, kept it and we rented it out to someone who's extremely happy with that. And the realtor called me about this house here, we love this neighborhood, we're, we're very familiar with this area. My wife and I know lots of people here and the Cheltenham Chase area, Bethesda area. And so when we were told about this house, we said, they said, what Cheltenham was trying to do is saying, would you come in and, and do the same thing? He said, absolutely. So my only instruction to GTM was to make the house look right and fit the character. The realtor told us, why don't we go up through stories, maximize your value? I said, no, I don't want to do that. So if, 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 uh, so the answer to your question is that I think a tenant might have made more sense economically, but that was not what our intention was for this. So, and, and, and when the project is done, I don't know if it will be reasonable to rent it out. Right now, I have renters in there, they're fabulous people, um, uh, David and Shawna, who David, if you've met, uh, but he's the CEO of Divana Foundation. They're probably terrific neighbors, um, and if we did the same thing again, that's probably what we would do is just, you know, rent it out again, like we do with the other. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your input back. Okay, thank you, Councilor Bar, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah. Is the front porch the only addition to the square footage of the house that they're intending?
No, there's a modest addition to the left side of the house. And that's a two-story piece, but that's within the town and county code, it does not require a variance.
But the total square foot addition would be what?
We didn't provide an area count for that because it's not a part of this application. I, I could try to run it quick for you if you give me a couple of minutes.
Front porch is part of it, just by asking a question. The issue is that if it's overall fifty square feet, our incoming town code requires a stormwater management plan that's under, it does not require a stormwater management plan. So the only chance we have to comment upon stormwater, if it is a hundred and fifty square feet, is tonight, in fact. In other words, by saying that you're changing the nature of the roof on the carport, then you're changing the storm, the water distribution on the carport. I would like to see how that's handled, neighbors are concerned about it, we've heard that. So if we can see how it can be handled, that would reassure me, allowing me to support variance, but I can't.
Well, we do plan on filing for a building permit for this. And as a part of that building permit, we would be planning on meeting all of the town and county requirements. And if this addition overall tips over that threshold where it would require a stormwater management plan, then we would provide that information as a part of that applic-
Yeah, but, but right.
To get a sense of whether or not from.
Yeah, well, perhaps I could say that, that we can put a condition on the approval of the variance that you do provide a stormwater management plan that shows how the water will be distributed from property. And I'll, I'll leave it at that as a suggestion. Um.
Do, do you want to ask the town attorney about the, uh, about that possibility?
Okay.
Just. Did you? Mr. Town Attorney, did you understand, uh, Councilor Bar's question? The question. Whether, whether, okay. Yes, sir.
The question is whether we can, in approving the variance, put a condition on it that they provide a stormwater management plan for a water will be handled off the roof. With the final approval. So would the, would the condition be that even if a water drainage plan is not, is not well watered, then the quiet. Yeah, the, the council could make that condition if the council finds that that condition is necessary in order to mitigate the impact of the variance, that's great.
I'd like to reiterate that we're not increasing the roof area of the garage, we're in fact reducing the roof, roof area of that portion. So the net increase to the total area of the roof of, of this portion is not going to tip that threshold, but I'd have to get the addition as a separate calculation, but uh, I, I don't see anything in the town code for stormwater management that says anything other than all new building construction must include stormwater drainage plans. And as I understand it, that means new houses.
Uh, right, we are currently revising our code to apply to renovations too, have not yet done that. And so that's why I said earlier that really we, we are constrained at this point only to say in approving a variance where you are changing the stormwater distribution characteristics, it is reasonable for us to ask how you will be handling stormwater under those circumstances because it relates to, um, neighbors. Because it relates to neighbors. Okay, thank, Counselor Robert, such a question. Okay, thank you. Counselor Rahal.
Um, I want to, I want to say I appreciate that. How you wanted to design this that fit into the neighborhood. I think it's certainly very, very good by house. It's called my architect. I mean, fitted it to all that I knew was here. And I think they like me a lot. But I want to say that I don't understand. Because you're doing so much building and so many, needing so many changes there. Why can't it fit into the parameters? Or do you need the amount of variances you need? Because they're, they're pretty big. And so I take it back to what Stephen said, you know. You haven't designed it completely yet. Yeah, you know, you know, as you said, because you're waiting to see what we said about it for. But I think you can probably do a better job in designing this. So if we're into our code.
So the existing garage, we're trying to reuse the existing driveway and reuse the existing space that's dedicated to parking. It's already a roof structure with a screen lattice on one side. We're just looking to put walls on it. And we're actually reducing the size of it from what is there currently. The front porch is part of like this EBL calculation, which is right at the front wall of the existing house. And while we're tearing it down to the first floor deck, we're not tearing out the foundation. We're, we're keeping the entire foundation of the house and building up from there to minimize impact. And so to have to put a front porch on this, we would have to tear out that wall, push it back six feet. Actually, a little bit more than that. To put a front porch in and then pull that area out of the house. Then we'd have to add on to the back. And so you'd be talking about a massive undertaking versus what is a modest addition to an existing house. We're building up from the existing footprint. We're not redoing everything. And so any front porch that gets added on to this existing house has to by its very nature. Get a variance because of the EBL location.
My issue with what you're doing is, is really not the front porch. It's your garage. You know, I think, I think you, you could do better on the garage. And, and I'm going to take away your word modest. This is not a modest renovation. It will be lovely. But this is nature. Okay? So I just think you can do better. Now, that being said, I am not a architect. I apologize for that.
So if we were going to make the existing garage non-conformant, we're taking an existing structure, tearing off. Twelve feet of usable space in the house and pushing the garage back into that location. So now we're reducing the usable square footage of the first floor of the existing house and. Creating space that's not as nice for that first floor. At that point, it would make sense to tear this house down completely and build new.
But I don't understand.
We're, we're trying to retain the mass, structure, character, nature of this. The, the structure is already there. We're just enclosing it.
Now, I understand that, but then if you're just enclosing the garage, you know, you're, you know, it'll be done a little bit, you know, to make it free. Um, why is, why do you need a variance? Why isn't it just the same size, just close to the line?
We, we could do that. It's actually smaller. If we made it the same size, only closed, it would be more in non-compliance. We have to make it within county compliance as well. So we have to reduce the size of it. Both from the left side and from the front. So we're, we're dealing with both restrictions and trying to make it as much in compliance as possible for both of them. While also maintaining the use of that space and minimizing the impact to the existing mass.
You stretch me around the. Do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Robert.
Can I just clear that? I'm like, because I'm now worried that my visual aid might throw you off. The, the parts that I colored in are not an addition onto it. It's just even the existing garage would, if it were built as is right now, they would need a variance for it. And since they're enclosing it, that part that exists right now needs a variance in order to enclose it that way. Does that help explain?
It doesn't make sense to me. If it's what exists now, why does it need variance?
Because it's being enclosed. Because right now it's just a, it's just a carport.
Existing carport is not conforming to our code.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Right, exactly.
It existed before we changed our code and set backs.
Right.
So it was allowed to be non-conforming. But if you now come in to renovate, you now require variance because the code changed in between. So you now require variance to complete construction with filling it in. That's, that's the reason. And on the visual presentation, the dotted lines represent the existing footprint of the roof. And then what is colored in yellow shows the new roof. Thank you. Counselor Kumar.
Great. I do, I have three questions. Can you hear me by the way?
Yes.
Confirm, yeah. But again, I apologize to the applicant in the room who I cannot see for not being there in person. And I appreciate you being there in person and making time. I have two questions for the applicant. First of all, I appreciate Debbie's questions. Because it helped establish one of the sort of peculiar natures of this in terms of the exist. Which was kind of fuzzy in my mind when I read through the materials. I appreciate those questions. I wanted to ask to the applicant, can you confirm, I know it's not material. It may not be material to the variance application, but I'm trying to, you know, dimensionalize scale and massing. Can you confirm the height of the proposed renovation? The height of the final house and the height of the top of the roof for us? I couldn't easily discern that from the drawings, but I think it's, it should be easily, easily explainable on your end.
Yeah, it's twenty-six point thirty-three feet to the ridge from the average redevelopment grade. Which is well above the, the maximum.
Okay, so it's, and, and then the height to the roof, roof of the garage?
It's roughly thirteen and a half feet.
Thirty and a half feet, okay. Okay, and then you were, you made a comment about sort of building back. Could you help explain the challenges or, you know, the sort of. On that lot, your observations on that front?
Absolutely. There is currently a walkout basement back there and a very nicely patio. And a retaining wall that runs on a slope following the property line. And so the property line is at an angle through the rear of this house. In fact, the back left corner of the house is pretty much right at the setback. It's very close to the setback. And so if we were to add on to it, we would have to add in an angle or step it back as we went left to right. And that would result in a rather choppy facade. It also doesn't. Bias what we're looking for in terms of this. We, we don't want to disturb more square footage than we have to. We don't. Want to disturb that existing rear patio space. We're looking at just essentially adding up and enclosing the space that is there. The only real addition to the footprint of this house is the, the small addition on the left side and this front porch.
Got it. So if I may play that back. To go back, you would have to dig up the existing patio. And you would have to extend a driveway further back. Is that right?
So to go back with the addition in general, or if we were to try to push the carport back to make it compliance?
Let's just take the carport back.
To do that. Actually, I have to do a calculation in. We would have to push, we'd have to remove a section of the finished first floor of the house and the basement. Or it's, it's a crossbase sunroom. Tear that off. Push the carport back, angle the back wall of the carport forward to clip the corner of it to meet the rear setback. And then build from there. It's a pretty substantial change. And then find out how to, to add that square footage that we lost in the first floor somewhere else. To maintain the, the general use and footprint of the space that we're looking for on the first floor. In terms of having a kitchen and a family room and a dining room.
Doug and Matt, is that, is this a sort of description consistent with your understanding of the existing house and property?
Yes, I, I, I think if you, if you look at the site plan. You, you can see that the, the shape of that lot is angled on the back. And so the rear setback is at that same angle because it's twenty feet from the rear property line. And so I, I, I think.
It's not a straight edge. It's not a straight edge. Is that right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's at its shallowest at the, at the side of the.
Carport.
The existing carport.
Okay, and then a question I had for you, Matt, is that do we have the, thank you, Luke, for, for those answers. Matt, do we have the complete set of, of neighbor land?
I. Yeah, I, I, I did add the neighbor signature pages to the, to the drive. It's actually in the, in the email folder. So it's, it was interspersed with a back and forth with the applicants. So I, I did individually print, print them out and include them that way. But they sent emails to all, they, they received, they received contact information from all abutting property owners and reached out to them. And in addition, we delivered from the town hall a notification of the variances that they were seeking. And information about joining this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's for me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Robert.
Um, so. I guess I, I'm just confused and maybe this is a question for Ron. In terms of how this all works with new homes versus renovations versus variances versus they're supposed to come to us first for a water plan. And I'm like, the whole structure of it is confusing me a little. One of the things that I've heard from as far as like neighbor concerns are some of the trees. How do we, um, like, would this renovation get brought to a building permit? And then they talk about the trees and then would it come back to us?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So in, in the past, the council has allowed. Variance applications to be filed and processed without full plans. Because the council has found that equitable. As the applicant argued, it can be expensive to produce full plans not yet knowing whether a variance can be granted. So in the past, the council has allowed that question to be answered. Are variances possible? That would then guide the full set of plans. If a variance were to be granted, there would be another public hearing for the permit. And at that hearing, all issues normally addressed at the permit stage would be addressed, including. Water drainage, tree removals, and the other permit criteria for permit decisions.
But would that happen both with a new build and, and it, and an existing renovation?
It would, yes.
Okay. Um, and so for these purposes, like, so does any, is the carport currently two car? Like, can two cars fit under there or is it just one car?
It's two car.
Two cars. And so. I know this has been asked and I, I don't know. I'm, I've got like a headache and hopefully not COVID. But, um, so why does the garage need a variance?
Garage requires.
You may answer, Mr. Olson, if you wish.
The garage requires a variance because the existing carport extends into the existing established building line. Once it was updated, the new established building line calculation. Pushed it into that. To a non-conformance essentially. So any change to that structure requires a variance apart from potentially demolition and not replacing it.
So it, like, it doesn't necessarily just get grandfathered in or it does unless you change it?
Let me answer that one if I could. So generally speaking. Building codes change over time. As they change, people are not required to convert existing structures. They're not required to conform existing construction to changes in the code, right? That would be unfair to people. That would be very expensive for, for people. So the, the general rule is construction that is rendered non-conforming by changes in the code is allowed to remain. But it can't be expanded. And this carport is non-conforming because its location projects it in the setbacks. It's allowed to remain, but it can't be expanded. Adding walls is treated as an expansion. So it's no longer a non-conformity that's being left alone. It's a non-conformity that's being expanded with the addition of walls. Because of that new work, variances are required.
Okay, just. Aid and the front of it. But it's not really adding on more bulk. It's just closing it.
Correct. And in fact, the roof profile is being reduced.
And so if anything, I mean, I guess like the only thing that it then would interfere with as far as like. Our criteria for variances is that it does then obstruct kind of light and air.
Generally, make that right.
I mean, if you, if you consider looking into someone's, you know, open air carport, you know, light and air. Okay. And then, um, so on. On the report from, I think it's the architect. It says. A variance from the county is not required. Unlike the town, the county only applies the EBL standard to new homes, not additions. So if this was a new home, would the county then not? Approve these variances as part of the setbacks?
The county calculates EBL slightly differently. One of the methods that the county uses to determine the EBL is the location of the existing house. And if we were to follow that, then our setback would be twenty-five point five feet. Now, the, the carport actually extends twenty-two point five feet in towards the street. So it's sort of, sorry, let me reword that. It's twenty-two point five feet away from the street. Which is why we need to reduce the carport when we enclose it into a garage. Because we need to be in compliance with the county setback requirements.
But even, even if it's just a renovation, not a new build?
Yes. A new build cannot. I don't believe a new build can count the existing house line as the EBL. But I would have to talk to a civil engineer about that. I believe it's discounted that method. That's for additions only. And that when you tear down, then you're subject to a different calculation. There's a few different variations of that. I think we provided a county EBL study exactly for that purpose.
Okay. And then to the, to the front porch part of that house. The front porch isn't going to stick out further than the existing carport anyway, right?
That is correct. It is roughly three feet back from that point. Let me look.
And it just connects with the other already existing part of the house?
Yeah, it connects from the carport over to the existing right wing projection. That right wing projection is twenty-five point five feet off of the front lot line. The carport will be twenty-five point six feet when it's converted into a garage. The porch is twenty-seven point three feet. Now, the reason that we have four variances is because we also have to request a variance. Now, the reason that we have four variances is because we also have to request a variance for the overhang and we have a twelve inch overhang on that roof. Um, but that variance request is less than the porch because of the two point five foot canopy eve overhang exemption that the town has provided for the EBL.
Okay. And then, um, and then all of the other parts of renovation that will go through the county permitting, those none of none of the adding up on this house is being is needing a variance?
That all complies with both the county and the town code.
Okay. Okay, I don't have other questions.
I think because of the complexity of this application, I'm gonna go to a second round of questions. You wasn't expecting a chance right now, so my best. Yes, Councilor.
Just gotta try to summarize what we're doing tonight only. For variance requests that are before us. What is a variance request for the current carport? We locate twenty five point six feet from front property line and that requires seven point seven foot variance because the the stout building line is at thirty three point six feet. Now, that is in fact going to be nonconforming. Oh my god, the carport is there already. Um, we're not, there there's no change being introduced in terms of closeness to the um street by this design. Next thing is front porch, the front porch will be new, that is, that is real. That is going to be a new front porch. Um, it will be located twenty seven feet from the front porch on the property line. It is actually not as far as the carport garage of the house. Um, there needs to be a variance for the eve of the uh, but there is an eve for the carport. So this is again, because it's a garage, then we have have a variance for that, there's no real change there. Um, and that's most of it, that's it's four variances. That's all, so it's nothing to do with the house tonight. Nothing to do with the renovation or new tonight, it is these four variances. And one qualification I put in, and this comes from the neighbors concern, is that.
Phil, you can, those are the kind of things I'm going to discuss, if you have any further questions, I'll go further. Councilor, help us.
My only question is, and maybe those letters, I want to hear what the neighbors say, because I can't handle this later.
We haven't, we haven't heard from. This is just the first round, your opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or the staff.
Okay, no question.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Kumar.
No questions, no questions, thank you.
That's from Robert.
Well, I guess that where does like, so if they're going to be sloping this roof, then it's going to be coming down like gutters in a different way on that carport. That's going to change kind of like the dynamic of the water flow. Wait, when do we discuss that? Is that part of the variance or is that part of like the water conversation?
I'll attempt to answer that.
You you can address it now, if you think that granting this variance would unreasonably adversely affect the use enjoyment or value of nearby properties.
I guess, okay, so I guess my question then is, what is the plan for the slope, the the new slope for the um carport?
As far as I can tell, how can I answer this question? This is Luke. Yeah. The existing roof drains from right to left towards the property on the left and runs to a downspout in the gutter on that side. And that gutter, I do not know where exactly it kicks out. It looks like it kicks out a grate on that front corner. Our new garage is going to have a smaller roof, so it'll have less water to handle. And that roof is a gable roof rather than a flat roof, so it slopes in two directions. So about half of the water that currently slopes to the left will be taken towards the front porch. And typically, how we deal with this, if the drainage plan is not required, is to sheet that water across the front lawn and allow it ample space to percolate into the soils before running to essentially the storm drain. If it's more water than that would be able to handle, then we might be able to direct it to um some other water management feature. But but the the important thing to keep in mind here is that half of the water that's currently draining to the left is being taken in another direction further away from that property and will be dealt with in some fashion on this site.
Okay, cuz um, you know, I I'm sure that you're aware of it by now, but you know, we've got a pretty robust like stormwater management concerns um for all, you know, for both like new builds and renovations. Um, and so I don't know if this house already includes like drywells and um, you know, other things or if you guys have kind of looked at that as part of your holistic plan as to, you know, what this water runoff changes will will do and impact.
We have not gotten to that point. We wanted to determine whether or not the variance would be approved first. Part of being able to do that is to have a sense of what the roof is. Before we have the roof area, we can't calculate how much water we have to deal with. And we don't know the roof area unless we know if this front porch variance will be approved or not, because that would contribute. Um, I believe we have the calculations on the front page. We're adding two hundred and five square feet to the first floor and we're adding two hundred and three sweet square feet to the covered porch. That's a total addition of four hundred and six square feet of roofed area. Uh, that would require a drainage plan from the county, but not um full stormwater management. And it's reviewed in a different department.
Okay, okay.
I have a minute back, this is actually for for Doug. What's what's the definition, what triggers a a home construction project to consider new construction, infill, functional management? I I thought it's like more than fifty percent destruction, what what what's the rule? I think it runs better, but it basically anything to change the structure horizontally or vertically will require. Not only just the door, but that, like the infill. If it's a, if you count as new construction, your infill, just where you tear, you tear down a certain amount of structure, you know, like the amount of land that you care occupy is affected, but the percentage of the land you can you can build on. And I would think that our town's code for stormwater management, we we apply that to new construction would refer to whatever whatever rebuild is occurring that triggers that new construction.
So if I may answer that one as well, we've provided that information in our set. There's two categories that would kick you into infill. It's the demolition and reconstruction of more than fifty percent of the existing gross floor footage of the house. And we've provided those calculations on sheet D one hundred. Uh, the total GFA of the existing house, which is gross floor area, is thirty nine fifty square feet. And we're demolishing and rebuilding fourteen seventy one square feet, so we're less than fifty percent. We don't meet that requirement. The other one is an addition of more than fifty percent of the gross flare area of the existing house. We've provided that on the cover sheet. And that our total GSF is forty seven seventy three square feet and we're adding fourteen twenty three square feet. And so we are less than fifty percent there, so in either case, we would be considered infill in terms of the county.
So, um, Mr. Trowinger, as we have been the Albicona period, can you let us know how many residents or guests have any language to speak so we can be economical with our time?
Yes, uh, I I can quickly summarize for you that uh uh, yeah, hints again, uh, I won't rehash uh contacting the neighbors. But um, one neighbor responded and replied also, it was part of it. It's included in uh, it's included in the correspondence uh in on the drive for you, that they said that they accepted and approved and were excited about the proposed changes. Uh, that was at forty eight oh seven uh Greystone. And then the um, the neighbors uh at forty eight hundred, which is on the left side, if you're looking at the property, have submitted comments to the town council, which I included for you, um, objecting to the.
It's interesting, no one has indicated any wish to speak to them.
Oh, um, I haven't, I haven't, uh, I haven't heard from anybody. I'm assuming that we will get some comments this.
Well, now, now, what I would say is how many people wish, he has indicated any wish to speak so we can see if we need to sit down.
Sure, um, at this time, uh, at least one resident has uh.
Okay, can you, can you call it?
Yes, uh, it says Laura Levine.
Wait a second, wait a second. Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, uh, are you ready to hear from us?
Yes.
Okay, we we we, uh, thank you. Uh, we want to tell you that we, I'm Laura, this is Barry. We have had terrible trouble hearing. Most of the folks who are on Zoom, we can basically hear, but the folks who are in the town hall room, we cannot hear. Well, I mean, it's not that we can't hear, we hear sounds, but it's very garbled. And I think we've missed most of it. So I, you know, it's very difficult for us to respond appropriately when we didn't hear, but we can make our comments. I think, you know, we have sent over the last few days several emails laying out our arguments. We sent one on the second, which I think is Friday. And then you, when when we got a chance to look at the Fri- the packet came in Friday night, when we had a chance to look at it. On Sunday, we sent, I think, another email and we sent photographs and we sent another email today. So it's, we'd like to, we'd like to know, but, sorry?
Let's receive all of your correspondence. Now, this is your opportunity, if you want to highlight anything or if you wish to ask any questions of the applicant or the staff.
We we want, yeah, we wanted to make sure that everyone has read our correspondence because those are our arguments and we're not going to take the time. We apparently don't have a lot of time and we're certainly not going to take the time now to make them. Fundamentally, the variance is not the minimal reasonably necessary and our code requires that it should be. And even if you don't think that's true, that's what variances are intended to be. They're not, they're an exception to the zoning rules and they should be the minimum necessary. And in one of our briefs, we cited a case that said, you know, a two car, an enclosed two car garage is not a necessity. The folks have lived in that house with that carport perfectly happy for decades. And the realtors have told us that lots of people would be happy to move into that house as is and live very happily with that carport and with no front porch. It is not a necessity, the law requires that it be the minimum reasonably necessary and it is not. Now, that aside, we will tell you that the enclosing an open carport, when we stand at our kitchen window and look out our kitchen window at the carport, the previous owner put up that lattice, which was not, they didn't get permission for it, it shouldn't be there, it was temporary and it needs to come down. But we're looking through an open carport at the street. We see people, we wave to our neighbors, we have light, it feels open. All you see is the posts and the top, but it's totally open. So there's light and air and minimal mass. They're going to close it in, so now when we're looking at our kitchen window, we're going to look at a wall of a garage. We will not see the street there, it totally stops the light and the air. So for us, it's a devastating impact on both mass and light and air, just closing in the carport. Now, they say the top, they're saying the area is less, I think it's less by a few inches, but the fact is they're raising the roof by several feet. They said thirteen point five, the existing roof of that carport is about ten, I believe. So the roof and it's going to be angled up, so from, so that's also further impairing what we can see and and the blockage of from that, from that window. The other issue, and it's significant, is this water issue. That alone, you should deny this variance. There are going to be two roofs, two roofs pouring down onto that carport roof. And now it's sloped in such a way, the two new roofs above at twenty six feet and at twenty four feet are pouring down onto that carport roof. And now it's angled, he said that it's angled currently to the left. I don't believe that's correct, it looks pretty flat to us. It's a pretty close to flat and it's just a carport. Now it's going to be all the water from the second story roofs pouring onto that carport roof and pouring down onto our side. We already have issues with water, so so that is um. And we're also downhill from them, that's right. So so the, we are absolutely downhill from, their house is above us on ground, right? So the water, we're really worried about the water issue. Um, so it's not the minimum reasonably necessary. It's going to interfere with mass and light and air. It's a serious stormwater issue for us. Um, they they said, you know, the other thing, they wrote in their application, they're making a small extension. I don't understand what they're talking about. They're, they're going to be filling in the the, um, what do you call the um, the the footprint is is empty, the whole big chunk of it, about twelve feet by sixteen feet or something in the back of the house. They're filling in, so I don't know, they say they're not changing the footprint, they're totally filling in the footprint. Why they can't have this be a conform, if they want to have a garage that conforms, they can move it back. Why can't they move it back and then move the kitchen back or something like that? I don't know why they can't, why they can't conform. And I don't know why this council, especially in the face of our grievance about it, wouldn't, wouldn't take the position, you know, this isn't the minimum necessary, you don't have to have a two car garage there, do it to, do it a different way. Push it back, make the kitchen smaller, make your pantry smaller. You know, what, or push it back into the, why, why at our detriment do they get to have this?
They they have a pantry, they have a design for a pantry that is twelve and a half feet lo- long and it's either six point eight feet wide or even as much as fifteen feet wide. It's difficult for me to read it, but that is a very substantial pantry. Now, they have referred in their application to that piece as a small extension on the left side. On four separate occasions, we wrote to the architect and asked to explain what that was. And on four separate times, he ignored it and he insisted that he answer the questions when he didn't. That is why we supplied and asked Mr. Trowinger to include in the packet uh, the email exchange, so you can see for yourself that they are totally evasive about answering the critical questions.
Let me, let me, can I just finish? So 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 the thing is here that they should, they're not entitled to this variance. So that's it, you should deny it, it's not lawful. It's not lawful under our current code, it's not the minimal reasonably necessary. And when a a neighbor is aggrieved, you shouldn't grant it in those circumstances. If we were happy with it, fine, then you should grant it, but we're not. Now, in what I said, what we wrote in our papers today is the reality is what bothers us even more than this carport, way more, quite a bit more, is the second story that's going to be looming over us and it's, and that, and that is going to to, it looks like it's going to kill the holly tree, which we sent pictures of it today. So so you can appreciate the critical importance of that tree. It is the total screen between our big picture windows looking out at a wall and looking out at some greenery between us and that wall. So it's so important because otherwise, you know, we renovated, we we've always had these trapezoidal windows, but they're big and they're really nice. And and if you came into our house, you would immediately see what we're so upset about. That tree is critical for us. It's just will be terrible to have to look out at that, those windows at the wall of their closet. And and so, and and the way they've drawn it now, they say existing, exist, the holly is, you know, what, I forget the language they use, they're not planning to remove the holly, but the building and the excavation is going to kill that holly. And we would like for them to negotiate with us. So this is the thing, we would agree, and we've said this to Mr. Alpie repeatedly, we will agree not to object and not to appeal any ruling, should you make one in favor of this variance. If they would work with us to protect that tree, which is going to mean modifying that footprint in the back of the house near that tree. The prior owners were willing to do that, they carved out a big section to protect the tree, we want the, them to do that. The prior owners were willing to do that, they carved out a big section to protect the tree, we want the, them to do that. And if they worked with us and talked with us and were reasonable about it. We would agree not to object to and or appeal this ruling, if you give, if you grant it, which you shouldn't. And so and so that's where we are. I hope I've been, I hope I've been clear.
I I want to add this, I want to add if I made. Yes, I would like to add a couple of comments about the trees. First, I would like to invite your attention, please, to the drawings, page uh zero zero two. Zero zero two on the left side. Shows the existing uh site plan. It before is, on the left side, it has two trees. That is inaccurate. There is a third tree that is not, not there. There is a, there's a tree, a tulip tree on the back corner and there's no reference to it. And I'd like to make sure that they agree that that tree would would remain. When you look at the the holly tree, which is in the big circle on the left. And compare it to the drawing on the right on the same page, zero zero two. You see that the proposed addition. The proposed site plan addition. Shows that the addition of this, what they call this modest or small addition extension on the left. It shows it goes right into. Although they say in this drawing that that tree will remain. It is not possible for it to remain. The excavation, the installation of footers for that new. Small or modest extension, which they we decline to describe, will kill it. And a- and of that, there can be be no doubt. So.
I mean, the reason, the reason.
There should be an indemnity here, that should that tree die, that they agree to provide a similar tree of similar size. Uh upon the death of that.
Well, we sent the pictures today, you can see, that's a forty foot tree and it's big and it's the only big tree around and it's makes a huge difference to us. So the tree is very important and we only mention it in this context. Because we think that this is the moment when they should talk to us, we've been beseeching Mr. Alpie. And Mr. Olson to talk to us about what can, what can, how can we reach an agreement here that works for them and works for us? And we want them to, when we think, you know, courts do this all the time, they send the parties to mediation, they require the parties to meet and confer, we think that's what you should do tonight. Tell Mr. Alpie and Mr. Lu- Lu- Olson to talk to us and we'll figure out where where they can make some modifications. They can guarantee that tree and we'll withdraw our objection to these variances. But our objections are absolutely legally sound. They should not be granted, not with our objections. Not in the face of our objections. And finally, on the porch, we'll just note that you guys denied the porch. The very same, almost identical porch the previous owners wanted. You said, you granted him the 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 second story, which was way out of mass. But you didn't decline to, you denied him the porch, the very same porch that these guys want, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else?
I I have a suggestion. For this and for other uh applications for variances for, you know. The way that it's currently set up, the. Council is being asked to assess scale and mass by looking at two dimensional drawings of the proposed project. Without regard to how it fits. Around adjoining or confronting our property owners. If if the town council were to require that the applicant. Three dimensional drawing.
That that doesn't address this particular case, so that.
Mr. Mayor. I I've tried, I've I've been respectful, I noticed that no one cuts off the applicant. Every time we try to make a make a statement, we, there's there's. And an effort to put the brakes on our our, what we want to say. I I I object to that. Inappropriate and it's not.
This is your opportunity to address this application, not the town code itself changes.
You know, you have these work sessions and the and the public is shut out from the work sessions. Then you have these 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 town meetings, you're invited to make comments and then you close off the comments. When do you expect us to actually make a comment that is heard?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Simply add that Mr. Um, Mr. Olson made reference to. Latest, the latest town adoptions and he said this would have been granted as a matter of course before the most recent town adoptions. I have no idea what he's talking about.
What is that town adoption to which he makes reference?
Okay, well, Mr. Olson had the opportunity to uh present rebuttal testimony, so I'm sure he will address that. So did you have anything else you wanted to add during this application?
We we would just again urge to please make sure, you know, if you haven't had an opportunity, because you know, we we didn't see this thing until late Friday night. We wrote some emails with full of our objections, I couldn't possibly cover it all tonight, so if you hadn't had an opportunity to read our emails. We should post, you should postpone ruling until you've had an opportunity to read them because they're full of our arguments. And support, legal support for our arguments.
Okay, thank you. So now the applicant has the opportunity to present rebuttal testimony, that is testimony that has not been introduced previously. And it directs directly responds to the public comments presented. Mr. Olson, do you wish to present rebuttal testimony?
Well, I only wish to say that. We we sent this package to uh the Leavings a month ago. Asking for feedback, they have had a back and forth with us. In email and I've done my best to answer their questions and um be courteous and respectful, continue to to tell them. They can ask me questions and I've I've done my best to answer those as I go along, I'm not trying to hide anything. We've provided a very thorough packet here. And we think that um, you know, we're we're asking for pretty reasonable things. That if you were to make a small change to the existing structure that's there, um apart from. The second story addition, which complies with the code. And um I I don't know what else I could do to create the dialogue that they are asking for. I I have responded to them, they have my phone number. We we're engaged with the town arborists to study the trees, I've told them that uh we we understand their position on that tree. And we will do our best. Beyond that, um it it just seems like they're against our application completely. Um and any modification to it would also be rejected.
Okay, okay, thank you. So before.
Want to say, I just want to emphasize that is absolutely not true. We would talk with him tomorrow and we are absolutely willing. We don't, we don't want to have to pursue litigation.
Thank you, Miss Levine, you have your opportunity, we appreciate it. So before I close the record, I do want to give the council one less opportunity to ask questions of the applicants.
Yes, when I look at Plan A one zero one, it shows the garage with dimensions of eight feet, four inches by twenty one feet, eight inches. Which is somewhere on the order of four hundred square feet.
Sorry, interrupt, I cannot hear you. Could you, could you repeat that, Steve? Very sorry.
I'm trying to understand demolition calculations in terms of whether or not this is an infill uh construction project. And the uh the architect directed me to. Page D one hundred, D four hundred. And on D one hundred, the architect says. For the gross floor area to be demolished and reconstructed, the garage will add two hundred and five square feet. When I look at the drawing on A one zero one, the garage is about four hundred square feet. I'm just trying to understand, I'm sure there's a reason, but to understand what the calculation is for on the previous slide. That come through?
I can only speak to the calculations that have provided, the um the infill calculation is done in a very specific fashion. It contains both the the first floor and the basement. And so it's, it's a gross number that we take and then we show the amount of demolition, we calculate the amount of that demolition. And and we run it. Again, we would double check it. Before we go in for permit, but that's, that's not where we are.
My read of the Montgomery County Code is that infill is triggered by being either a newly detached house. Demolition reconstruction one fifty percent of the floor area of the existing detached house or the addition of one fifty percent of the floor area of the detached house. Why is the second floor addition not included, second floor addition on A one zero two?
Because we're not demolishing a second floor, a second floor doesn't exist, there's a first floor and there's a basement floor and so it's two different calculations. There's one where it's the demolition reconstruction. And there's another one where it's the addition. Our addition is less than fifty percent because we're adding a second story in a small piece on the left side. Our demolition is a portion of the first floor and nothing in the basement. So that that is how you you run the calculation, it's two separate calculations. And either or triggers it, but not both, you don't combine them.
All that, thank you.
None for me, thank you.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public portion of the hearing, the record is now closed. The council now discuss and deliberate on the findings of that conclusions of law and the benefit of the application. Into the the discussion, I will turn it over to the council president.
I think this is a more challenging variant for the class. Uh this one, the Levine spoke to, I look at slide zero zero three, that has the photographs of the existing structure. And. I think that that finds to be a fairly open and inviting structure with a lot of air. Variants uh would would eliminate that, do I am there? And I am not in favor of the hearing. And you're the variant for the class. But.
Let's go around, thank you.
Point is, if we grant these variances. Then without seeing really what the rest of the house is going to look like. You know, do we get hemmed in then maybe something that we won't think is appropriate? And I am to begin, I know it's the cocker for the horse a bit and I understand what they're doing, what they're doing, but that's just, that's number one that concerns me. Number two. If we were to grant variance. On the garage, you know, with the wall, we're talking about the uh um stormwater management. Could that be conditional based on what would, when we get a final plan? If it doesn't meet our standards, we can do that.
Yeah, that's what I imagine.
Positively condition. Yes, so with respect to the first question. The variance is granted would be. Granted upon the condition that the plans conform. I'm sorry, that the construction can conform to the plans as presented, so you do have elevation drawings showing what the house would look like. You haven't assessed other issues like tree removals, stormwater drainage, however, the. Elevations, the footprint of the house, et cetera, couldn't change, if that was your concern. Number two, stormwater drainage, yeah, I did say previously that if the council would find that. Impact of the variance, it would be adversely affected regarding the usage of your value nearby properties because of, because of stormwater drainage issues. The council could address that now. From from a practical standpoint, we'd need to identify what. Criteria would apply to the plan that we compel, because that's not a decided.
Um, David, I can't remember. I went to write it, I'm just rewriting here, but I didn't write it down. I I I don't, I don't remember now, sorry. I'm concerned about the trees. Um I I think the Levine's bring up a good point about those trees. And I don't know how they're going to protect the trees, so. I'm I'm, it's really like sticking in my craw here, is if we grant these variances, um. Are we going, are they going to lose the trees? And um so I'm kind of leaning against this.
And you don't need to.
Sorry, I cannot unmute. I just wanted to say I couldn't hear all of that, well, I apologize. Uh I I did catch the first part of what you were saying, Steve, I think you you showed up, referred us to a page where we can see the carport. And I was wondering if there are garages or carports on that street, for instance, just for the sake of discussion. In terms of establishing whether this is somehow incompatible, you know. With the character of the town or nearby residences or structures and in fact, at forty eight hundred Grantham. Right next door is an enclosed garage. With roughly the same visual effect of this proposed enclosed garage. So just for the sake of completeness, I wanted you to, all of us to be aware of that. Um as I discovered on short visit on Google Maps just a few minutes ago. Secondly, I, you know, I think there are some peculiar elements here, right? That like Debbie established earlier that it's the same, you know, land footprint. So they're not changing that and and it seemed to be reducing it, in fact, on the gar- on the garage side. And then this, the property is not a perfect rectangle, it has this slanting edge. Which if you, you know, were to not like keep the same footprint but push things back or do things differently, there seem to be some constraints, so. That's definitely on my mind, this is, there are some peculiar elements here that. You know, I think should weigh in, I'm not thinking, at least they're ringing on mine. Lastly, uh I agree on on the trees, you know, and. So to the extent that we have the sort of ability to condition this approval on the preservation of. One or more trees, I didn't fully understand the outcome of the conversations with the town arborist. To be, to be honest with you in in the in the back and forth between um the applicant and and forty eight hundred Grantham. Uh but to the, you know, so I don't, I don't know. If anyone else understands where we are with the preservation of those trees, I think. If we can do that and if that is, you know, inconsistent with our ability to condition this variance, I think that will be something of interest to me. And then, um you know, I I asked Steve, if you remember, we have looked at applications that are almost double the size of. Or at least, you know, eighteen, twenty feet taller. And and so I was trying to kind of dimensionalize what is scale and mass at twenty six feet. That is not inconsistent with what we see, in fact, it's on the on the mid range of what we see in terms of scale and mass in town. You know. And and so overall, the intent here. I don't know, Debbie, you might be right, it's maybe it's not modest, but it's definitely not. You know, extraordinary, the construction, they're keeping the same footprint, they are adding a floor. And that to me is is on the sort of less involved side of constructions we see in town. Whether it's modest or not is a different, I don't know how to think of that that way. So those are some thoughts I have and and open, open to the discussion.
The only comment I want to make before we move on to Shannon was on the footprint side, I believe they're actually increasing the footprint by. Several hundred square feet. It's just that some of that is not directly related to the variance before us tonight.
I am not muting, I cannot unmute, I think Matt is locking the mute.
We miss.
Other reasons, so I apologize. But I uh by understand, uh could we discuss that actually, because my this. Because my, then I've not understood it. My understanding is the the land, the footprint stays roughly the same, and then they're adding a floor. That's not everyone's understanding.
Go to slide zero zero two. Go to zero zero. Are you on that?
Zero zero two, yeah.
And the the proposed site plan in the lower right, the new garage, the new two car garage is gray. Behind that two car garage in hash marks or diamond pattern is the new pantry.
But that is already existing paved area, right? From the existing house? No, it's not.
Look at the existing site plan from the left. There's nothing there. It's just right. And that's why the Levine's are concerned about the structure unavoidably killing the tree. That's their concern. I don't know if we can look at that concern though tonight.
I see. I see. I see. So it's not a part of our purview today.
And and the new front porch is all new also. That's all new.
Um, wait, so Steve, so that that back part on the zero zero two. So that part of the site plan that would possibly potentially disrupt that tree that's right there. Um, that does comply with this, all of the our town code setbacks?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I don't know if it's my time to talk, but I would like to say, um, I'm, I would definitely be concerned about the stormwater management on the chain. You know, variance or no variance. Um, I think that they're going to have different flows off roofs and slants and and stuff like that that's going on. Um, with, to me, it does not look like there's a lot of places in this site to have dry wells and to, um, you know, take some stormwater mitigation efforts. You know, again, I'm not a civil engineer. I don't know. I'll be anxious to see what they come up with. Um, but that would definitely be a concern for this variance in particular because of that changing slopes. Um, and it's not really addressed in this variance report. And so it seems like a little discombobulated to me because if we approve a variance that has a roof that slants in in different locations and in different ways with the stormwater management. Um, then if we approve the variance, but we don't really know what's going to happen with the stormwater management, how do we like recontain that? Do we do that in like the the building permit hearing?
I think so.
Yes.
And then, you know, the second part of that as well is what I agree, and I had kind of mentioned before, I mean, I do think that that will take away light and air and, um, you know, visibility, um. You know, you can see it just in general from the picture of the existing carport to what that garage looks like in the front of the house is like their template. And you can see right then and there that there's less light and air and more mass, um, for that particular variance of the garage.
Thank you. Do you want to add? Yeah, okay, um. Again, we are considering only uh the variance is before us tonight. None of the variance affect the trees on the property, so we really can't discuss the trees at this time. That is for the actual permit itself when it comes up, and then they are required to have a. Um. I did raise a stormwater concern originally, um, and I do want to put a condition on approval of the first variance, which is the imposed carport. It will give you twenty five, twenty six feet from the front property line, so variance is supposed to be required for that one. Because the roof is changing. It's going to have a gable roof from a flat roof. And although that means only half of the water will flow towards Le Levine's property, um, it will flow faster towards Levine's property because of the gable roof versus flat roof. So I do want, um, a stormwater mitigation plan that shows how the water will be handled for the roof before approving that variance and we can take it to the public hearing for that. I have no concerns over the front porch. I think it's a reasonable front porch. Many homes in Somerset have front porches. I I don't see concern there. And I don't see concerns over the eaves either because the eaves are already there with cardboard and sudden extensions on these. There is, yes, as two components point out, um, a change in the massing of the structure because it controls the garage versus cardboard. But as Kabir is pointing out, and I agree with Kabir on this, that is not unreasonable, that it's how most homes in town are, they have garages, um, which do, um, be, you can't see through them. And this will in here. So I do not think it is unreasonable to have a garage in these times. Okay, thank you.
Robin, sorry to interrupt, but could you clarify what was the condition on stormwater that you were proposing?
I'm looking for a stormwater management plan for water coming off the gable roof of the garage. Uh, in particular, uh, show and reassure that it does not disrupt the neighbors in any way, um, it's Levine's who would be affected.
Because you're you're concerned the slope will impact the enjoyment and use or value of nearby properties.
Oh, the property could flood their, you know, yard, destroy plants, whatever. Um, yeah.
So. Um, I think that'd be a useful caveat in approval, and I'm still on the position of I don't think any of this matters. I don't think any of the four variants requests satisfy the threshold required for for the town to approve. That's sorry.
Steve, can you repeat that, please? Could you repeat? I'm so sorry. I couldn't hear you.
It's okay. As. So. The council approved the building code restrictions for the new building code requiring variances or any extensions into the town setbacks. Um. And Levine's noted that we disapproved a very similar, we the council, I don't know. A very similar porch from previous architect for the same location. Um. I I just don't see why.
And because.
Even as I remember it, actually, we disapproved it because they were gonna have four feet eaves.
Right.
On it.
Big eaves.
Uh, which is it, which is, it it consists with and different from cost per hour on the town. That that was why we didn't approve it.
So I withdraw that comment. Um, I just, with the level of destruction that they're doing or demolition that they're doing, um, I think that they could design and build a house that was more in accordance with the town building codes.
Why?
Maybe behind it, maybe it'd just be a single car garage. I just have a single car carport. It works. And and I realize that's not as desirable to meet all of the dimensional objectives for the architect. This is a difficult site plan, but that was known when this property was purchased. I just don't understand why we would. I don't understand why the council would have got new regulations to protect the setbacks of the town and then just and.
So he says, uh, he's the council chair to make a motion.
So I'll try it and see how it goes. I don't know, don't go over the standard. Um. I will. I move that we disapprove the four variance requests for the topic located at forty oh six forty nine. Is that?
Is that Mr. Senator, is that legally intended? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a special on the motion?
Yeah, I I I will.
Robin, could you say that again? You propose what? Sorry.
I I will oppose that motion.
You you oppose or propose? I can't hear you. I can't.
Oh.
Oppose, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, boy.
So you are amending it or opposing it?
I oppose, I'm opposing it. First of all, are you objecting to the porch? Steve?
Yes.
Why?
Why do they need to?
What is your reason for objecting to the porch?
He turned down the last time.
Because of four foot eaves.
Right.
They're not putting in four foot eaves.
It wasn't the same porch the last time. It was eight porch, but not the same porch.
This is a very large porch. What's its square footage is like thirty feet by seven feet. It's like two hundred and ten square feet of porch. It's a big porch.
I think I think something like a way for us to look at this is what Stephen said earlier, and I think I said long ago that they're they're doing so much building from scratch. Why not build a house that conforms to our code? I think that's what makes sense here. You know, this is like you you're struggling with, you know, how to fit everything in.
Tear that.
Well, then I can tear it down. You're tearing actually not.
Excuse me, this is pretty special.
I'm sorry. I just, I I I I said, but, um, it it's just that they're taking down so much of the house. Then why not conform and make everything, it's like easier on everybody. You know, um, that that's just what I think they should do. So.
So this, but I understand they're not tearing down the foundation.
Okay, uh, Councilmember, who are, can you start? Again, we missed the first part of yours.
I said, I said that, um, you know, it is major work, but at the same time, they're not tearing down the foundation. So it, that's what, unless I've misunderstood that, but I believe they're not. And that's why they keep saying modest. You see, they're saying, look, we're we're keeping it as it is. And we are, we are making, we're adding a floor and making these improvements. Not justifying that that's right or wrong. I'm just trying to characterize this, con- con- intellectualize it for us. You know, breaking into the foundation and doing a rebuild, that is could three X, four X, ten X the cost here. So it's not a apples to apples, in my understanding. You know, so they are doing major, but they're doing major, you know, more modest relative to other major, which would require breaking the foundation and redoing everything. In their perspective, they're keeping it as it is and adding a floor. You know, and and that's why they keep characterizing it as as modest, if if I'm, if that's consistent with other understanding.
Can I ask a question again? Um, so by them adding that that roof height onto the flat carport roof, does that like, let's say that they have the carport and left it as is and just added some weird roof element to it, which took it up and like sloped it down, would that need a variance?
Is that what their question of reason to town turn?
If that modification was made within the setback area, which is the purple area shown on the visual presentation provided by the town manager. A modification within the setback area would require a variance.
So I can't really see that, but so just does what if they just put a, if they put like a rooftop on, let's say they wanted to make the carport a little bit taller, like would 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 that have a variance?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Because that is on this kind of quote grandfathered in structure that they're changing.
Correct.
Okay, and then where the columns are. So when Steve, when you were saying like, why can't they just have a one car garage? Like, so would you then recommend that they make the one car garage where they then remove in the walls from that grandfathered in? Um, or I mean, would they push it back from the grandfathered in? Um. Thing in order to accommodate the one car garage?
I I'm a naval architect. I really don't. Um, I I wouldn't try to to suggest or tell the architect how to solve the problem. I'm just, I confident that there are other, that you come up with other designs. Just as in fact, we have seen other designs for this same piece of property. I I'm confident that we told the architect, he cannot, you know, cannot get variance for the garage going to the setback. They could come up with a different design and still have a lovely house on a piece of property.
And, um, just the side, the side of the carport, the side is fine from a setback perspective, right? It's just the front.
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry. Thanks, Karen.
And and just to be. My understanding is on the front. Sorry, I was just responding to Shannon. My understanding is that they are pulling back from the current front.
I think they're pulling the overhead back. I have a photo or something.
Pulling the over.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, very mild, but they are correcting from, so right now as it is, it is worse than what they are proposing. That's why, you know.
But then, but then they're putting something on top of it.
They're putting the this roof on top of it, and which is where I think Robin's observation that that might lead to um, potential, you know, discomfort on on water, uh, flowing more aggressively into the neighbors is a, in my opinion, a reasonable one. But all the other elements seem, you know, reasonable to me from from what I'm seeing, barring Steve, your broader observation that where do we draw the line? I appreciate that as well. But the this lot is challenged, as I have maintained previously, it is not, it has a sliding edge in the back. And then there are these peculiar conditions. I don't think we can ignore them, but you know, I I appreciate I might be a minority voice here.
Well, so to say, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing that all this in favor? So it's the motion is to deny a variance.
What are we voting on? I forgot.
The voting on his Steve's motion, as the circuit's motion is to turn down the four variance request. All those in favor? I see, um, the President Heller and all those opposed. Okay, thank you. So this concludes the public hearing. Thank you to all parties. The town attorney will now issue a written decision based on the council motion and the decision we put into all interested parties about town. Next, we have the building administrator's report. Mr. Lamar.
Great, we're over this evening. At forty nine hundred Cumberland, that point expires in December, until it's not thirty four. And we got a state update from the beginning. Uh, there was a new item that would be added, this forty seven oh one Cumberland. They're proposing a wall, a lawn, the front property line. They applied for a county structural wall permit that's pending. At forty eight sixteen Essex, uh, that project we talked about last month, and that I contacted the architect, and they've made some major changes to the plans. They are not uh, going to be expanding the building as much as possible. And they say they'll be scheduling plans to the town soon. Fifty two twenty, fifty five twenty three gray stone. That building will be expiring in October sixth, and they been notified, we just submitted a extension check today, and they were submitting the paperwork to be on the October agenda. And five oh six Warwick, they're from that expires. And five oh six Warwick, they're from that expires in November, and they've contacted about needing to go into the extension. And fifty five sixteen Warwick Place for the retaining walls. Doctor Feather has completed his review. And the town will be issuing the building permit shortly. And that is my report.
Thank you, council president. Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Bar.
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Council member Kumar, do you have any questions to the building administrator?
Doug, what's happening with, I couldn't hear you very well, so I apologize if you're made to repeat, but what have, what's happening with the property on Trent Street? Um, that was our sort of first case on Strongwater.
Very close. The the house on Trent, fifty five oh six Trent, so fifty five oh six. Uh, they have installed the tree protection. They have installed still fence, and I believe that we can demolish it shortly.
What, do you know when?
No, I haven't got paid on it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I already reported with me.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Rob, activity questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. The next item, a public hearing motion to consider removal of the following town trees at the recommendation of the town arborist. A dogwood on Cumberland and ash on Dorset Avenue, a red maple on Essex Avenue, a service period. On Fallstone, a pin oak on Warwick Place, a red maple on Warwick Place, and a sycamore on the Powell Park. And I believe Dr. Feather is online.
Yes.
I am. Thank you. Uh, I would also like to add one more pin oak that was called in by a resident after I made this list last Thursday. At forty nine twelve Essex, it's a pin oak twenty three inches. The. The top has been, it's been topped for years, and now the side branches are starting to die, and. The resident's concerned about it, and I'd actually like to take it down this Friday.
Dr. President, can you, uh, open your video?
Can I do what?
Can you open your video?
Open my video.
Okay, thank. That's okay, we hear you okay. Well, it's better if we can see it.
There you go. How's that? Here I am.
No questions, thank you. Council member Bar.
I have no questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Council member Kumar.
Um, Tobi, I have the same question I ask every time. Have you informed residents?
Yes, we have. I did drops at all of these houses on Thursday with the information sheets that I prepare.
Have you emailed them?
I have not emailed them.
Email them.
Okay, well, I need their, I I can get with London.
Matt has their emails. Please email them. Thank you.
Okay.
Then it, that's a requirement perhaps in the future that could be added to the. Do you have any further questions?
Uh, one clarification, since you're adding this pin oak and it's requested by the resident, but it was not on the list the P N R C reviewed. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was, it was called in on Thursday after I did this list. Then I went, I went and looked at it Friday, actually.
Okay, well, maybe you can do an F by I to the P N R C that this has been added.
Yes.
Them having any objection to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I I think we do, I'm glad that Council member Kumar is raising this because I I do think that we. Should have a discussion about, uh, the appropriateness of adding. Trees at the last minute. I I understand that that it might be a burden and Dr. Feather, but I think we should have a discussion in the future. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, councilor Rob, do you have any questions with Dr. Feather?
Um, yeah, so like one of, one of these trees, um, at forty nine oh nine Fallstone Avenue, it's just like, you know, that. Tree in a bag, basically, and I'm sure that was part of their, um, plan to redo, you know, trees when they had to take some out to make this new house. Um, where were we on this? Is this like part of, like, do they have to replant that?
No, the forty nine oh nine is a street tree. It's a street tree, so that's our tree that died.
It doesn't look like it, like in there. I mean, it looks like it's.
And there's no, there, there's no sidewalk there.
Oh.
So it is on the right away.
So 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 they don't require any reforestation or whatever?
No, no, that's a, it's a public tree, so we're, all we're doing is replacing a public tree that died that we planted. I don't know if we planted that last. Spring or I think last fall.
Are all of these public trees?
Yeah, all of these are public trees.
Oh, okay. I have no other questions.
Yeah, all of these are public trees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
No, not this time. Okay, thank you.
Here, um, council, very big motion.
And I move that we approve the list of public trees recommended for removal. Um, by the town arborist with the addition of the pin oak. And with the, uh. Additional notifications to now, to members requested by council.
Second.
Oh, I think I saw it, Councilor. Uh, Kumar first, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
You ready? Thank you, uh, Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Mayor.
Then you heard it. Uh, the next item is to discuss Caribbean Pool Services Incorporated pool inspection report and. Needed repairs for town pool to town manager.
And unfortunately, they weren't able to join us, but, um, uh, Rob Smith from American Pool is on the line if, in case anybody has some technical. Questions about some of the recommendations. Um, I I tried to lay it out for you in a memo of where we started, how this has evolved, and. What are some of the recommendations and how how the fallout would work? What are some of the considerations logistically, budgetarily, um? Just very briefly, you'll recall, as we went through budget discussions, um, we budgeted about a quarter of a million dollars to do. Concrete repairs for the deckworks surrounding the town pool this off season. And as we were looking at it, some more American Pool. Brought up, brought it up and said, well, while we're doing that, you really ought to think about replacing the pipes underneath. Because the pipes essentially have the same lifespan as the concrete deck, and if the pipes go, which may happen. Uh, they're about fifty years old now. The pipes lifespan is about fifty years. So if and when the pipes go, it would require us to take down all the concrete again and redo all that work. So you might think about. Doing the work holistically and kind of all altogether. Um, now, that that work, in addition to the replastering of the pool to make sure that the pool basin itself stays structurally sound. Is going to add significantly to the the amount of money that we budget. Um, and no matter what we do, our five year plan will need to be adjusted to accommodate for this work. Um. So I I kind of laid out three options. Four options, one option one, I think we could pretty easily eliminate, which was just to just forget the. Forget the report about the pipes and just go ahead with the concrete decking. I I don't think that that's advisable. Um, option four is kind of on the extreme end, on the other side, which is to say. Let's just figure out a way to pay for it right now, sign it, sign up with American Pool and, um, amend our budget and. And do the work right now. Options two and three are. Um. Would would allow us to both get a a. Better understanding of the work. And I think also allow us to do a competitive bidding process, because I think when we're talking about. Work to this extent, even though technically, uh, it it could fall under our contract, it's it's best practices to. Get multiple bids. And and also leaves open the possibility that if we did a truncated RFP process even. That we could possibly phase the work and do some of the necessary work within the money that we budgeted this year. Reevaluate and get sort of a longer term plan and possibly phase the work over the next. Couple of years from whoever the bidder might be that we select. And have better information when we go into our budget season for next year and and the five year plan. Um, so that's why I I have recommended that option three for us. Um. But, um, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a pool engineer, um, and I'm very grateful that Rob was able to to jump on. He might be able to answer questions you might have about logistically, how might we, how could we theoretically do phasing and. Um, understanding that, you know, I I am not trying to be presumptuous and say that American Pool is. Would be who 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 we did, but they are very familiar with our pool. They, uh, they, they, they took over from community pools, as you'll recall, and it's the same. The same, uh, same organization, just, uh, just by a different name, so. Um, I I do trust what what they have to say about our pool and, um. Their advice on it. So, uh, thank you, Rob, for for joining us, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions and Rob's side as well.
Okay, thank you. Council president, sir, do you have any questions?
Um, I'm just curious about the pipe. Major potential cost I own. Is there any way to. Like remotely assess the damage of piping? I've heard of. Doing that by pursuit system, so why can't we do it in?
Yeah, yes, and and Rob might be able to expand on this a little bit, but my understanding is that we can do some camera work to assess the. Status of the pipes a little bit more clearly and get. A written documentation of that, but it would require us to drain the pool, um, in order to get the right equipment in there. And so we would have to wait until the pool season closed to get that information.
Right, and I think you actually. I don't really know this app, etc., so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Bar, do you have any questions?
Well, I I've got a suggestion, and like, um. If it can be done, which is that we actually lay the concrete work by a year now. Um, and basically, we try to budget. Across the money we've got for just now, plus money we put aside next year, so that if we need to replace the pipes and the concrete. Then we'll have something like totally need by a year from now. That would allow time for us to assess the conditions of the pipes as well, while the pool is drained in winter time.
Yep. And then also before I I try to. To, Councilor Heller, then it it would also give you the opportunity, as we've discussed. For a long time, the use of new technology to figure out what is the. Future, the long term status of the pool itself.
Yes, we we did, I think we did some core sampling about seven years ago, and that's. My understanding is that's about how often you're supposed to do this replastering and the the seal on the pool basin, so. When we did it last time, we did some, and at that time. The pool was found to be in pretty good shape. There there were some, there was some minor cracking, I think, but, um. Nothing that that.
Isn't there new technology from seven years ago?
Oh, I I'm sure there probably is.
Just remember when that kind of collapsed in Florida. We learned that the Metropolis. Anyway, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, uh, I like the idea, like Robin's idea of putting this off for a year. Um, but the question involved in that is, is it safe? You know, um, yeah, are our problems so bad with the concrete that we can't put it off, one? Family, are our problems, are they that bad? I don't know. I don't, I don't know how to assess that.
Okay, again, maybe maybe Rob will want to tell them. I think more realistically, what the. The problems that we would be more likely to face is a pipe bursting or a big piece of concrete getting a big crack in it that it. I don't think, I don't think, for example, we're in danger of the the pool falling off into the creek if we if we put it off for a year. But we are, I think, the more we put it off, we're at a greater risk of. A pipe exploding and taking two months out of the pool season.
Right.
That sort of thing.
By putting it off, though, I guess I wonder what is the percentage increase in costs, because it will cost more next year than it will right now. But, um, I don't think that's a good enough reason not to put it off, because I think we have bigger questions. My overall big question is, what does it cost to build a new pool? Maybe that's a Rob question. Because are we coming to the end of the life of this pool? Nobody knows when we changed up the pipes last, and I have to tell you, like, we turned out thirty eight years, almost thirty nine, and. You know, those those, actually, sorry, thirty six years, um, those heights have not been changed in that whole lifetime. Um, so, you know, what are we trading? What are our needs? What is the new pool cost? When do we, when would we have to put a new pool? So I would love to have that as part of our thinking as we put this, if we put this off for a year. And to explore that question as well.
Okay, thank you. Council member Kumar, do you have any questions?
Matt, what what is, uh, what are we discussing? What do you need from the council?
I think. Right now, I would like guidance on. Should we go ahead with some work this? Should we plan to do an RFP and plan to phase it? To do some work this year? Or? Should we hold off altogether, or less likely, should we? Hash it out and figure out how to rejigger our budget to. Put an extra eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in and just. Go full steam ahead and just get it done right now.
If the question is, should we do an RFP? To do the work in a phased manner? My answer would be yes. If it conforms with the quarter million already budgeted. If it doesn't conform the first phase. With the quarter million, assuming each phase is one year. Uh, then it requires a budget amendment. Are you proposing a budget amendment?
No, not this time. No.
Okay, so the the first question is, should I do an RFP? You have the funds for? For some action? I think. So the answer for me at least would be yes to the RFP. The question would be, does the first phase go over a quarter million or not? And if it does go over a quarter million, then we have to. Come back and do a budget amendment and look at all of these other factors. So that's one question I had, one line of thinking I had for you, reaction to what you're proposing. And then the second is, you know. I want to understand sort of. Um, I don't know if this is listed anywhere. I think it was in your memo. I I I'm. It seems like over the years, different recommendations have been made. For work we need to do. Do we have a sum total sense of that? So you referenced something, twenty nineteen, something was recommended. You just now reference. Last year, we looked at this, or two, you know. I don't have a clear sense of sort of what is the sum total of all of these. Assessments we've been doing in this piecemeal fashion. Should we put any weight in them at all? Or are they all irrelevant at this point? If we put any weight in them, then what are they pointing to? Maybe this goes to Debbie's question. Are they pointing to, you know, hey, we need to intervene, and and this is significant?
Well, I. Councilor, uh, I think that one item that Matt didn't address a few minutes ago is the. Comp, is the, uh, comprehensive nature of the. The the report that we got wasn't really comprehensive, and I think that there are a lot of questions. So I think some of the guidance that Matt needs is what more information, and I think you've laid a lot of these questions out here. But I'm not sure that, you know, he just got sort of a. But I'm not sure that, you know, he just got sort of a a broad brush engineering report because, you know, he only spent twenty five hundred dollars. And I don't I don't think that you're going to get all the deep information you need with that, right?
Oh, what?
Address that anyway. I mean, wasn't one of your proposals that you get more comprehensive report from an engineer that will answer a lot of the questions that, okay, oh, yeah, so much.
Yeah, I mean, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
No, I I'm sorry, there's a lag, so I apologize. Why don't you go ahead and then I'll 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 speak.
Okay, um, yes, the mayor, the mayor's right, I I think I think at this point, our best plan of action, and part of the reason it's on the on the agenda was just as a discussion item and in part to update you all on a a major big ticket item that's evolved and changed. But I I I think the best course of action at this point is to do a a shortened RFP process that would allow us hopefully to undertake some work um this off season so that while we phase it, we can get get started, so we can, if we need to replaster the pool, for instance, maybe we can do that. Um I I don't know, um I I would have to talk with with any potential bidder about that, that if the pipe work affects that and how phasing might need to happen, but um I I I think for me, it was more this is what I'm recommending we we ought to do right now, based on the new information that we've gathered over the last several weeks. Um unless unless the council has any strong objections to that, then that's that's our plan ahead or, you know, I I wanted an opportunity for the council to talk about it and if somebody else had some great idea that I hadn't thought of myself, then uh I'm I'm all yours.
Yeah.
Okay, hold it, it's, Councilor.
Uh I'm 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 good, that's that's helpful, Matt, and and yes, yeah. Um but I I I think, I understand, I hear I hear you, Matt, and I mean I don't have any creative ideas. I think if there, if in response to your questions, and I think there is a budgeted item, there's an understanding of what needs to happen, you're making a certain phased, you know, approach, sounds reasonable to me. I think my only thing would be, I think you would mean to come back to the council. I think other council members would agree if it goes beyond budget for this year, and then I think we would need to weigh in on that and how we address that, and hopefully you come back and you say, it's going to be on budget, this is, you know, it's this is how it's beyond budget, this is my proposal, and that would be the fodder for our discussion. I suspect.
Okay, Councilor, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I I I think that if we can push off this deck repair, you know, until we really decide what the overall general need of the pool is. Um so we can do it for like another year and then next, you know, next fall, what do we have to do, what do we have to budget for and and really figure out like the true need of it? I think is going to be the best option for everyone.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think given the latest of the hour and the uh lack of a lot of information, and this is a related discussion item, perhaps we should continue this discussion at the work session in two weeks.
Yeah.
And I think, like, I I think that uh it it seems to me that all of you have confidence in town manager to make whatever decisions need to make you make between now and then. But I I don't think that you really have, you know, this isn't, as you said, this isn't an action I'm pushing, right? It's just to see if you have any questions on on the app, on the report that you will receive. And I mean, I don't think you, do you really?
No, no, I think I think that's fine.
So let's, so let's plan to uh
on the work session.
To reduce other work sessions.
Sorry, see, I.
American. Jeffrey, sorry to interrupt, since American Pool is here, if I heard Matt correctly, uh I have a quick question for them, is it possible to ask?
Yes, of course.
I don't, is it Rob who's here or? A quick question is sort of, what is, I believe it's in in our documents, but it would be good to hear from them since they've been servicing us for a number of years, where where is the most pressing set of interventions uh from that perspective on the pool? And then if they have a view on Debbie's question, does this pool, do we just build a new pool or does one renovate this pool? Come on.
Yeah, appreciate, I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I appreciate the uh, appreciate the tone. Um there's a, there's a million different facets in here, and just to back up a little bit, I was with Community Pools, I'm part of the merger, so I'm very familiar with the facility uh as of right now. So it's sort of, uh if you will envision a snowball effect, okay? It always starts with the deck, right? And for years, uh the conversation with the deck is that it's in failure. There's not anything uncommon, right? Obviously, we live in a world where conditions, weather, which is number one, and really, for that matter, the only factor that affects concrete is always going to affect concrete, whether it's a pool deck, a sidewalk, no matter what you will. Uh the fact of the matter is, when you do lift the deck, when you do lift the concrete, do the age of the pool and the structure of the pool as far as the recirculation piping, the conversation came up between me and Matt, that if there were ever a time to replace it, or for that matter, even look as to the last time it was replaced, it would be right now, okay? Um and there doesn't seem to be a very clear answer as to what that, for that matter, what that answer is. Uh I can tell you right now, I'm dealing with a similar property where they had replaced their piping probably twenty years ago. And we are replacing the deck right now, and the conversation was had, it was obviously a lot of different voices involved, and the ultimate decision was to replace the piping, okay? Now, let me, let me back up just a little bit, and in in addition to that, I don't know if everybody had seen the proposal that was submitted. Uh I guess that was probably a month ago, maybe a little, little, uh probably six weeks ago, whatever, whatever it is. I said it's a snowball effect because there's a lot of different factors involved with just replacing the deck due to the size of this pool, okay? Can I sit here and tell you right now that you need to do everything? No, because the pool isn't showing that sort of failure, okay? Do you need to rebuild the pool? No. I had a conversation with Matt while we were at the pool, we're not seeing any structural problems at all, okay? What we are seeing problems with is act the code. Appears there may be a leak, we're not a hundred percent sure. Um it's all the internals, if you will, everything you can't see, okay? Uh and ironically enough, the whole idea of a pool is everything that's on there, a deck, the coping of tile, the plaster, is actually meant to protect the shell itself. The last thing the shell wants to be is wet, which is insane. A lot of people think about it and they think, well, what do you mean it's a pool? Why wouldn't it be able to get wet? Well, because it's concrete and it could fall into failure. Regardless of the situation, if there was a decision to be made, okay? I live in a world of budgets, everybody lives in the world of budgets. There was a decision to be made, if the deck is going to get lifted and we're going to replace the deck, everything involved with that should be done as well. And I'm not saying it's the fact that, you know, it it's a great opportunity for me, it's a great opportunity for American Pool. But it's also a great opportunity for Somerset, the town of Somerset, to be able to know that, hey, we did it, we're done, we're good for another thirty years. Plain and simple, okay? Now, keep in mind as well that next year, with the way we're hitting increases in pricing, everything else, you know, we're looking at ten, fifteen, twenty percent increases in everything across the board, and then it's a staggering number no matter who you are. Also, keep in mind, there's a big number in that proposal that I sent that has to do with removing the plaster in there. That right there is a hundred thousand dollars, is that a hundred percent necessary? No, it's not, okay? Should it be done right now? Yeah, it should be done right now, but that doesn't mean it needs to be done, okay? As I said, there's, once again, it's a lot of different factors that are flowing through this. And I understand it's a huge number to hit, and I understand there's a ton of questions, that's why I'm here, I'm here to answer questions, I'm at your disposal. So let's get at it, I guess.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate, appreciate that, thanks a lot, thanks, Matt.
Okay, thank you, thanks for everybody, to be continued. Our next item is to consider introduction of ordinance nine twenty two one and ordinance to amend code ordinances to include two preferences for on-site stormwater mitigation, to permit variance hearings, absent a county permit, to require a wall check at the completion of building construction, to clarify the criteria for permanent decisions, and to waive requirement for permeable driveways if site conditions are not favorable. And as you all recall, you have been working, working very hard on this, and you asked the town attorney to draft an ordinance to begin the legislative process. So with that, I will turn it over to the town attorney to briefly, briefly describe the uh legislation.
So this term draft, as set forth in my transmittal, makes the edits discussed to date, the concept of conservation landscaping has been replaced with environmental site design. So I've added a new definition for environmental site design, which would be the first level of the tiering. I've noted that the council should make sure it's comfortable with the E S D practices that are approved by the Maryland Department of Environment in the assignment. I have to date exploded dry wells and tanks and labeled them as structural practices instead, in accordance with Councilmember Barr's comments. Also, in connection with Councilmember Barr's comments, a provision has been added to exempt from the paper requirement for new driveways, driveways that have a slope over five percent because the water is going to run off paper anyway. And to leave it, the enjoyment provision from the standard permit criteria, currently it remains in the variance criteria. That's an item for the the council to discuss as well. I find it is appropriate to maintain it in the variance criteria, it is difficult to define it there because variances are often more based on the actual factual impacts rather than substantive code criteria. Happy to answer any questions that the council member stands for.
Thank you very much. Council President, certainly have any questions?
Um yes, thank you. First off, thank you, Ron, for working with the council over many, many months to put together Congress and put in the code language. I have one question, maybe this is what you're getting at just there, but I wasn't sure. In paragraph for section one twelve dash nine, criteria for permanent decisions, you cross out paragraphs E and F, talking about adverse effect on health and safety of property. And I'm not sure that we have council agreement uh conference on that, but I guess my real thought there is maybe it doesn't apply in the building in in the straight permanent decisions, it applies more in the variance section, is that what you were saying?
Yes, it is.
So isn't it variance, I didn't see it in the variance.
It is, it is.
Oh, it was not in this?
A subparagraph E.
I'm sorry.
E, let me put section A.
Oh, I, okay, I see it, okay. It's it's the start of the next to last page. Okay, I just wanted to. It's important to have that type of guidance for the council as we consider variance request. Okay, that's it.
Okay, Matt, you guys over, Bhar, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I I'll make a comment first that I didn't touch, because some members are sorry. I'm just interested beyond what they're ready to make. Um and I'm not going to go over all of them, you'll fully agree, I think, next chance to talk, we'll probably mention them. Um but my feeling is that we're going to have to do this in stages, now that we've got the code change this time, and then we can see how it works, and then add for a little string.
Well, but but remember, tonight is just considering introduction, and once it's introduced and goes through the process, you, there will be the opportunity to uh amend it when it's voted.
Right, yeah.
So that would be the great, yeah, remember, we go through a process where we we publish the original proposal and we solicit comments, and it doesn't have to be voted on.
Some of it, some comments are really straightforward, um and that that kind of stuff, we don't need any kind of discussion on. Uh some of the comments are more substantive, we probably need for the council to discussion on them. Um for example, um they're now wondering whether we should classify dry wells the same way as the state classifies dry wells as a landscape. Part of the E S D, but probably, you know, this this sentence, I'm around with the structural thing, I I'm I'm I feel it's appropriate because they're structural, so I have these kinds of discussions. Um.
Well, but Councilor, but Councilor Bhar, if you, if you feel that it's ready to be uh added to this proposal, you can tonight.
Right, well, I mean, one very simple thing to add, which is that um we introduce a tiering structure for new buildings. But when we get to renovations, we do not mention the tiering at all. That they're supposed to come up with a stormwater mitigation plan. So when you're doing, when we have the language on renovations, you can just refer them to the section on the tiering and say they should follow the tiering um building that plan. Um that's, that that's very simple, can be done. Um it 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 takes, and I don't think he's got the question, but others do.
Okay, thank, as I said, you know, when it's time to make motion, on the introduction, any council member is free to add anything, and it can, and 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 you decide. And and because, you know, you might feel that it's ready to be considered. Right, okay. Councilor Hall, do you have any questions?
Um, you know, I read through this whole thing and I took a few notes. And I was thinking, that was the time to talk about them, you know, just the the little things, just little questions, and I I don't want to waste.
Well, remember, tonight is just, this is just to get the ball rolling.
Okay, because I.
It it is not anticipated that what this is going to do is is going to be the end result.
Okay, so I'll save mine.
So you might want to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Um Jeffrey, mine, I have to say, one, I missed the last working session, as you, as all of you know, so I haven't had the time to really engage with this. I was hoping the comments here would improve my understanding, but I feel that they're still I I'll be very brutally honest, I would welcome the opportunity to engage with it on a working session, ideally before we we introduce it and get the legislative process going. Uh it's also ten to ten right now, and this is a very substantive aspect of our agenda, admittedly.
Well, well, actually, uh there there would be the opportunity to discuss it at the next work session. It's probably, since you've been working so hard on this for the last year, I would suggest that you introduce it. And then you can discuss it at the work session, and perhaps, you know, questions about what's in there can come up, or what you might want to add will come up. And you could also decide that you you don't, that you don't want this considered in October, that you vote on in November. So really, tonight is just to get the ball rolling, so it's good.
I understand that, but I I feel personally uncomfortable doing that because I haven't had a chance to engage with it, and there's a marked up copy in the in the binder, there's a set of other comments in the binder.
I I understand, well.
You know, it would be nice to be able to kind of coalesce around it before before it's introduced, but I I admittedly, that might just be my hangup, I apologize, but uh it doesn't seem. But I, it doesn't seem, especially since this is an issue we've been working on, I, I see no harm in giving it proper attention and, and, and getting it across the finish line meaningfully.
But we did, we did discuss it in a working session, didn't we?
Well, well, thank you. When, when the motions made and there's discussion, those are, uh, good arguments to make. Did you, did you have any other?
Well, didn't we, haven't we discussed this in like a working session already?
Hold on, hold on, Councilor Robert. Uh, did you have any other specific questions right now, council member, Kumar, on the draft?
None, because I haven't had a chance to engage with this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilor Robert, your turn.
So can we just go back over the process? So this then, if we push this forward right now, then we go and talk about it again in a working session? And then we announce it to the council, or I mean, to the town and we do?
Well, you, you, if it's, so tonight is the opportunity for the council to vote on whether they want to introduce the legislation and get the ball rolling. But if, if that doesn't happen, then it can go back to a work session and can be reintroduced. It can be introduced at any time in the future.
Oh, okay, I guess.
Right, maybe, maybe council, maybe the town attorney has some input in time.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just food for thought. Introduction, in my mind, signals to the community that we're seriously considering adopting. Introduction is a mechanism for providing it to the public so they can start compiling comments for a public hearing. I would suggest not introducing unless we're fairly confident with the draft as written, because otherwise we might be asking the public to prepare comments on something that might actually not make it to a public hearing. But frankly, it's appropriate to do it either way. I, I do think that there's at least one item that's probably going to require a little more detail. With respect to renovations, we do need an engineer to tell us how we're going to calculate the requirements that's in the code. I don't know if Doug can do that, or if we're going to need someone specifically practicing the new area.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Robert, do you have further questions?
Um, no, but I actually think that, um, I agree with Kabir. And, you know, I, I think that it would be nice to like kind of really walk through, like, you know, kind of an overview of like what this really means holistically, you know, with the stormwater plan, with the, um, renovation plan. Like what, you know, what are our goals and like, are we achieving them? Because we're going to obviously have to sell this through the town or, you know, get a lot of town approval for it. Um, and hopefully the town will engage because it's very important to them. Um, and, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we all understand the ramifications of what we're asking um, and to see it from all sides, because there's a lot of different perspectives in town. And, you know, we just want to make sure that we're, we're all in line, you know, in agreement with putting forward the best thing that we think is the best thing for our town, you know, in the near future, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I think this has been a very robust conversation. And I think based on what I'm hearing from majority and also the town attorneys uh, outstanding input into this, that I think that we should, um, also schedule this at, at a work session. And then, because I, I, I don't think there's a majority prepared to introduce this tonight. So thank you, everyone, for your input. Uh, the last item is the town manager's report, Mr. Commissioner.
Yep, noting the time, I, I will try to keep it brief. Um, I do, I do have a report for you all, so you can read. I'm happy to discuss in very detail. Um, just a couple of some exciting updates. One, um, uh, I, I, I have been working with, uh, council member Barr in particular to help, uh, who's helped me, uh, with an RFP for solar panels. Um, so I'm just making some final tweaks to that and then sharing it with, uh, the chair of the environment. Many of them plan is to go out to bid on that. I'm still waiting on the grant, uh, the outcome, uh, that we applied to earlier with L I D C. But we did also apply for an additional grant just last week through FEMA for up to $50,000. Um, so have some, um, ha, 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 have, have, have some, uh, some potential, uh, funding sources there. Uh, streetlights, I know is a really important one. Uh, I've put in an application for four pilot streetlights for different wattage bulbs in town. I think we should do a short pilot program. We've done, we've done a pilot program before in town. Um, this really, the idea is we'd look at this and be able to see, yes, that's, that's the right temp, that's the right, uh, brightness that we would want at an intersection. And that's the right brightness that we want in, in a straight roadway. And so, once we do a short pilot program on that, uh, we put in another application to begin the actual installation throughout town. That would start about eight weeks after that. Um, Doug's helped me put together an RFP for a roadway master plan. So we're, um, going out to bid on that very soon. Uh, we have a site inventory that we did throughout town, a report should be issued on that very soon. Uh, I've had some preliminary talks with them. Um, and, uh, also Linda and I have, uh, identified uh, trash cans that we, we might be able to replace the trash cans throughout the, uh, town trash cans throughout town, so they're covered ones that are more aesthetically pleasing. Uh, easier on the nostrils. Um, and otherwise, I, I, like I said, it's, it's there for you in the report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that standing for council president, Sir Kadi, have any questions?
One quick question, I noticed that there's another bicycle out there right by here. I believe the mayor is riding a bicycle.
He might, he might.
Didn't he like? What is, what's the chance of getting a bike back, can you tell me? Isn't it a bike back, I just, I'm on word?
I think it's a.
Well, we've got a, there's one behind the tennis court.
Yeah.
Ah, behind the tennis court.
Okay, it's great.
But we, yeah, I mean, that, it's just.
Thank you. Did you have any, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
No question.
Thank you, Councilor Howard.
No question, because the bike track doesn't make sense behind the test courts. It's go, okay, the test planes, but not.
Okay, let's.
If I come to me, I'm going to not hold on.
Put it on the work session. Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions of that?
Well, Matt, kudos for, uh, acting swiftly at the beginning of the, of the fiscal year. It's two months into the fiscal year, we have 10 more months. But in reality, we have six months before we start the next budget process, as you know. So I, I really appreciate you acting quickly on lots of big, chunky, important, impactful items. Um, the, the second thing I would say is that on the lights, please, let's not get into another perpetual testing cycle, experimentation cycle. You know, if, if we can have very strict time limits, maybe it's a one-week experiment, not a two-week experiment. You know, I, I, I apologize if that sounds arbitrary, but I, I just would want us to act swiftly. Uh, because I think we know enough to act. And so, you know, we don't need to know whether the darkness on Monday one is different from the darkness on Monday two. So if we can just act quickly, I think that would be great on the light front, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Robert.
Um, I just had a question in terms of like the policing program. Or the, have, have they been filling out on the website and their, their time slots a little bit? I'm sorry, I, I need to probably follow up with it separately, but I just wanted to make.
Okay, who froze up in the beginning? Can you restate your question?
He brought what up?
You, you froze up in the beginning, can you restate your question?
Oh, I was just wondering how, um, with the, with our town officers, if we were able to be gathering their time, um, how that's been going?
Yeah, I've, um, I worked with Sergeant Chung to create a, a log that I've shared with, um, the Public Safety Committee Chair, um, for, for comments on that. And they have been logging their specific hours, um, starting, I think this, I, I just ran payroll today, so this was the second two-week payroll period where they were logging their specific hours during the day and, and sharing that as well with the committee. Sergeant, Sergeant.
Great.
So, um, this past week is a little length, but.
Oh, and, um, and the same thing with the, the spreadsheet that has if there were any, um, like if they've stopped cars for violations or anything like that?
That's the sheet that I, I have a dra, I have a draft that I worked with Sergeant Chung to create and have kicked it back to the committee to, for feedback on that.
Oh, okay, they're the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I saw the tennis, tennis audience and they look awesome, I think. So it's great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks to, thanks to the committee chair for, for her work in getting it done too.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilor Robert, before we adjourn, I do want to do great credits on this thing. Saying all night and to thank Linda and Matt. I thought this was, I think this went incredibly well. They'll do a two, do some tweets for next month, but I think this is really going to work beautifully. And thank you to our Zoom council members. It was very helpful that you were there so that we could learn by experience. And we'll see everybody, you know, we have a newcomers party on Sunday, the 18th, two to four, and our work session is 5:30 to 7:30 and 19.
Are we here or are we on Zoom?
Work session. No, we're here.
I'm just asking.
No, we're here, we're here. No, you're back, we're back live. Hopefully you'll be here.
These are.
Hopefully you'll be here. Thanks, everybody.
What are these?
Your message to adjourn.
Welcome to adjourn, bye-bye.
Thank you. See you.